Located on campus. We also have Department of Aging as a partner, who has subsidized part-time employment for anyone who is 55 or older, and who has been unemployed and is low income. EDD is, of course, the biggest partner that we have, and we do provide CalJobs, JobSearch in our centers, as well as other forums, monster.com and all of that.
And we're talking about some of the tools, if I may. Don't forget JAWS.
All right, we'll get back to that, because you've given me a good lead-in to the next topic.
Good.
The Department on Disability, in conjunction with the Emergency Management Department, and with technical support from City View, produced a series of public service announcements aimed at persons with disabilities and their families. Please watch.
In the case of a disaster, you need to be able to communicate with emergency personnel and your support network, as well as to stay current with the latest information. Make sure all batteries are in good condition. Keep an extra supply of batteries on hand for your hearing aid or cochlear implants in your emergency supply kit. Rotate them regularly. Install both audible and visual smoke alarms, where at least one should be battery-operated. And test them regularly. In case you're left without your hearing aid or cochlear implant, plan how to communicate with emergency personnel. Store pens, pencils, and a small notebook with your emergency supplies. Pre-printed messages with your medical conditions or allergies are also a good idea. In order to get emergency reports, determine which broadcast stations provide continuous news coverage that's signed or captioned. Only you know what can prepare and assist you and your family in case of a disaster. Are you prepared? For additional information, please contact the Department on Disability or the Emergency Management Department by calling the numbers on the screen or by dialing 311.
We're back on Disability Forum with Susan Quigley from the Community Development Department, and Les Roberson, Disability Program Navigator, Community Centers, Inc. Let's talk about the program that, I guess, has gotten the most national play or discussion over the past few years, and that's the Ticket to Work program. Les, why don't you tell us a bit about the Ticket to Work program, and something about its history and all the important information?
Oh, I'd love to. Ticket to Work program has been around since 1999, Clinton administration. And it's basically saying, listen, our citizens should be able to go back to work without the worry of losing their disability, losing their insurance, and losing all of their benefits at one time. Some people are not ready to go right back to work, and that's what the ticket provides. And easily. So the way it works is, you come to an E N and you contact Social Security.
That's an employment network.
As an employment network, yes, of course. As an employment network, you know there's training that you could receive from Social Security. Maximus is the consultant with Social Security. So we've got some good rules and regulations that they've -- because it's going to be impacting the lives of people coming back. Sick, upset, disabled, everything, but really tired of being at home, or just not enough work for them, not enough income, and they just want to become part of society again. I actually sat on the sidelines for three years myself with heart failure. They told me I'd had heart failure. And my biggest fear was, am I going to lose my cardiologist? What if I cannot make it? That little self-doubt. And the E N explains this to you that there are some rules, there are some ways to go back to work, and that's how we do it. We continue to improve the network, the networks and the communication with Social Security and with the disabled, and get them back to work if we can. We're in a tough economy right now, of course.
So anyone who has decided they are tired of staying home, they can -- do they have to request the ticket from Social Security, or is it automatically?
Well, Social Security, as you said, is one of the big national things right now, national attention right now. They are going out. But if you haven't received a ticket, you can contact Maximus to see if you're eligible for a ticket. There's SSI, and there's SSDI. And the difference is SSI is Social Security income. SSDI is Social Security disability income, where you've paid in the FICA. So as to our disability income, we think we deserve a little bit more.
So I have my ticket. I walk through the door of one of the two employment networks, and then I can expect to sit down with someone and to perhaps get the training I need to go back to work?
Yes, of course. At my center is me, Les Roberson, and in the Hollywood work source is Margot Scobbo. And we have all the everything that you need, all the stuff, the help we can give you.
Now, just so this isn't a walk in the park, one of the criticisms that I've heard over the years as an advocate in the disability field is that the training sometimes does not necessarily prepare someone for employment in an area that they are interested in. What has been done over the last few years to perhaps bridge the gap between theory and practice?
Well, that's a good question. First off, you have to train the ENs. So there is a weekly training that we listen to. On Tuesday, Tuesday ticket training. We do that. And you have to understand the economy's changed. And you have to write up an I W P, an individual work plan. So it has to be something realistic when you're going back to work. For example, if you've been amputated and you worked in the racing industry, it may be a little difficult to get around. So they ask you to be realistic with the change in work, with the change in the economy. Green jobs are going to be some of the bigger things. We're doing that with C D D, of course. So we have to kind -- let's be realistic.
Healthcare.
Healthcare.
Is another one. Infrastructure. I think it's important, my thought is with the Ticket to Work, is if you're serious about going back to work, you really need to do some labor market investigation, which you can do through our work source centers, and look at the trends towards employment before setting your goals. And I just wanted to clarify one thing, Mitch. There was a wealth of tickets that went out in the mail early on with Ticket to Work. A lot of people, I think, discarded those tickets. Just because they never used them doesn't mean that they can't request another one and be able to take advantage of the employment networks. Generally speaking, most employment networks do not go through the local workforce investment areas. We are fortunate in the city of Los Angeles to have two centers that are serving as employment networks. And in the same respect, having the two navigators who are connected with the Ticket to Work program.
I think that's been key.
Yeah.
In terms of success that we have.
Yes, in terms of the success. It also ensures that you have someone who helps you navigate the Social Security Administration system, the EDD, the Medicare, all of these different systems. It helps individuals navigate the system to be successful, where in the past, that was not available.
Are there any national statistics yet from Social Security on the number of persons with disabilities, or perhaps not, just persons generally, who have come through the Ticket to Work program and found employment?
Not yet, no. Because since they have retooled, maybe with the census coming, redoing the census, maybe we'll see them then. But not yet, because as you said, there were some things that needed to be fixed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the first year, if I remember correctly, Mitch, 16,000 tickets were sent out, and less than 1% were redeemed.
That's what I remember.
And so I haven't been as on top of the ticket program because it's run independently. However, I do think that their numbers have improved. The other thing is, you want to be able to follow individuals for more than 30, 60 days. So to get that employment verification information back through EDD, for instance, it's almost a lapse of six months in order to get that information gathered. So I haven't seen latest statistics, but my sense is that they are improving. And this is with the downturn in the economy right now. This is a wonderful time to do it.
And I think it should be pointed out, the Bureau of Labor Statistics just began to keep statistics on unemployment persons with disabilities. And a lot of us who have been involved in this area for a long time have really cheered this development because it's about time that we find out what the actual rate of unemployment among our population is. Les, why don't you give some phone numbers? We have, you know, a lot of resources out there.
Of course. Okay, we've got, first off, our website, EDD. It's easy one. It's E D D dot C A dot G O V. We've got our telephone number for the work source centers, And they'll let you know where your local work source is, and the T T Y number is
And Les, that's for both the work source centers and the youth one source centers.
Okay, and you can also access the website, W W W dot L A city dot O R G forward slash W I B. And Maximus is simply a telephone number, And you can reach your E N through your work source information or the Maximus phone number.
Very good. And I want to thank Susan Quigley, Workforce Development Analyst with the Community Development Department, and Les Roberson, Disability Program Navigator, Community Centers, Inc., for being with us on Disability Forum. Again, if you would like information about the Department on Disability, please call 213-485-6334 VOICE or 213-485-6655 T T Y. Or email the department at W W W dot L A city dot org forward slash D O D. Also, if you have a question or comment about Disability Forum, please email me directly at Mitch, M I T C H dot Pomerantz, P O M E R A N T Z at earthlink dot net. This has been Disability Forum with your host, Mitch Pomerantz. Until next time, thanks for watching, and take care.
...
Once that item is called, there'll be no further cards accepted. One more time, if you're here to speak on an item, fill out that card prior to the item being called. Once the item is called, there will not be any additional cards on that particular item. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alec Concardinus, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Corian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Very well, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes, seconded by Mr. Smith.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weston, seconded by Mr. Coetz.
Mr. President, before we begin with the regular agenda, there's a request to continue two of the items. Item number one, a request to continue that matter to Friday, April 30th.
Without objection, that is approved.
And also, a request to continue item number 21 to Friday, April 30th.
Without objection, that is approved for continuation.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 10, and for councils' information reports have been submitted on items 6 and 7, and these have already had hearings in committee.
Very well. Any specials, colleagues? On item number 7, please hold for Mr. Garcetti's arrival, number 7, please. The remaining items, Mr. Coetz.
If we could ask that 4, 5, and 10 be called special?
4, 5, and 10, special. Mr. Rosendale.
3, 8, and 9.
3, 8, 9, special. Any other specials? On the remaining items, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 11 through 20, 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on item number 11.
Hold item 11 as a special. Colleagues, any other specials on the remaining items? I see no one bringing a special. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Would you like to take a public comment at this time?
We can do public comment. Public comment is now open. Right before the bell, they got in.
Good morning, one and all. Elected to serve as our EEO, affirmative action employer, and service provider for the people of L.A., with funds held in trust for the benefit of the people of L.A. On April 7th, I provide you my claim form, which shows what services I've provided for general services, and what duties I have under MOU 2, 3.2, Article 3, Section 3.2, to serve the people above and below me, and resolve disputes in an expeditious and problem-solving manner. The CAO refused to discuss items of trust matters with our general service manager, Tony Royster, and no one has wanted to address these matters. I was directed by my personnel and general service managers to speak with the city attorneys in any matter in regard to this claim. I will provide a copy of this claim to Dennis Zine on December 16th, and to this council on April 7th. To date, I have not received any confirmation or consideration, calls, or anything, so I guess I can only do it in that two-minute period that we have here. Starting next Tuesday, I will be providing you the information that people chose to ignore for the last 21 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anchor Patel.
Now, I've said I appreciate that the City Council is diverse. We don't hold race, religion, sexual preference, any of those things, those political rhetoric, all that stuff, that doesn't play here, and I appreciate that. But we also have to look at the rest of the world. We look at our unions. We have able-bodied, 150-pound men, 200-pound men, asking to work less hours, work less hard, and get paid more than the 80-pound, barefoot Indian woman carrying 30 pounds of weight on her head, the 200 migrant laborers in China suffering from wage serfdom. And then we continue to act like government is supposed to provide jobs to these people. Government is not supposed to provide jobs to the unions, to the IBEW. You're not supposed to provide them no-bid contracts. You're supposed to provide opportunity for competition between private entities. You are supposed to facilitate the economy, facilitate private organizations competing against each other, not monopolies like the LEDWP. Now, again, you bring up Austin Butner, a billionaire. He's about to get the interim manager position at LEDWP. You guys still haven't picked up a 245, and unfortunately, I don't think you guys will. You can't give him the keys to the biggest cash cow in the United States. This is a municipally owned. I own this, you own this, we own the LEDWP. They don't have a page on revenue. There is no access to information. You working on it? Thank you, Councilman Rosendale. Councilman Zine? I appreciate that a lot. Thank you. We, the people, support you, and I'm glad to say that this is going on, and that's good to hear. I'm, again, very proud of that. But again, the LEDWP, their budget, they don't make their individual projects available to us, and that's another point. Garcetti and Perry on record as saying they don't trust the DWP. We need to get the individual projects, like the $1.5 billion solar project, put into a form that we can look at.
Thank you. Lorraine Ornellis.
Good morning. I'm Lorraine Ornellis from Councilwoman Janice Hans's district, and a member of the San Pedro Bay Historical Society. First, I would like to thank Councilwoman Tom Labange, and all those who worked diligently with him to preserve the Hollywood sign for the citizens of Los Angeles. Their efforts are greatly appreciated, especially by all historical societies. Second, I would like to recommend that the general managers of the various departments be knowledgeable in preparing factual budgets, and have some business background, and realize that the city of Los Angeles is self-insured, so when frivolous lawsuits are instituted, it diminishes our resources and puts us further in debt. Third, parks and libraries, the basic recreation providers for low-income families, should be opened more, if not less, by using sound practices and allotting staff properly. Thank you for your consideration.
Just thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Yesterday, in discussions regarding the DWP, and the, you're taking over the $6 million that the DWP claims they're absorbing every day. It was very disconcerting to hear the discussion regarding this rate increase that you were talking about, that you voted for. And what was disconcerting is hearing councilmen say, "Well, we're not sure if it was for three months or it was permanent." And you voted first, and then you found out the facts. That's really disconcerting. How do you represent 400,000 individuals? How do you represent your portion of the city? How do you have items on your agenda? How do you have items that you're going to vote for, and you don't know what the hell's going on? How is that possible? And with the DWP, and there's manic need to have this rate increase, why isn't it explained? I mean, is this the first time a DWP has come before the City Council and asked for a rate increase? Is this the first time they've had this kind of situation come up before the City Council? You've been in sitting for three terms almost, because you changed, you asked to change the city charter to add a third term, so you could clean up, so you could be more open, so you could be more positive, more, what's the word I'm thinking of? I can't say that one. You know which one. But this is ridiculous. And $6 million a week. So is it for 12 weeks, and the rate increase doesn't take effect until July 1st? What the hell is going on?
Yvonne Autry.
Good morning. Just for the record, I'd like to express the fact that, and also for further future reference, in kind of collusion with an associate of mine, who's also experiencing some of the same harassment and coercion, but a lot of us who are still enjoying affordable housing, just for the record, again, to object to the increased assassination on our characters, the increased efforts to displace us in favor of those who are paying market rent, especially now as gentrification is fully underway, and you're actually enjoying the increased revenue because of the new influx of the gentry. Those of us who are still enjoying the affordable housing and glad for it have been victims of increased slander, defamation, provocation, entrapments, and I do believe it is because of the economic situation. And we are grateful for the covenants that do exist, and we are fighting to maintain them for those of us who need it, whether they're veterans, single parents, senior citizens, or any of us who still have a right, because this is a democracy, not an aristocracy, and not an oligarchy. Also, with regard to police complaints, again, for those of us who are speaking out, there are positive influences, there are positive police officers. Thank God for this officer here, he's always been very congenial and very positive. For those of us that are consistently filing complaints against certain world police officers, and our complaints are continuously disregarded, I object to this. It's denying the city and the police department an opportunity to go within and rectify the corruption within your ranks. You cannot incriminate those of us who are pointing out the corruption does exist within the police department, as well as within the City Council, possibly. And when you're incriminating those of us who are pointing that out, again, it denies the city an opportunity to actually change and improve its relations with the community, which is why you exist, actually. So again, I'm in objection to over three or four-plus complaints that have been disregarded.
Martin Howling.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Martin Howling. Is there a Martin Howling? Pardon me?
H.A.
something. I can't read your writing, sir. Martin something on Sixth Street. Your last name, sir?
Hayne Line. Hayne Line.
Okay, that's not what, okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. As Michelle was saying to you, what we experienced at the Hayward is criminal. Stella Lozano never writes down the complaints. What the management there is getting away with is retribution for people like me who come forward. We give information, we show corruption, the mayor running illegal aliens, the guy who got the contract kicking him back. You come and say, "I did something." You don't let me see the papers. You say someone accuses me of something, Ms. Lozano hides it. We need an investigation. It's the city's money, it's our money, it's our freedom.
Thank you. I'm happy that we were able to clarify a little of the rules there. It says before or during on the rules there. I just wanted to say something about some people on the radio now coming and making some subtle innuendo remarks about people from California with good haircuts, but don't have anything to say at all. Everything else they say is censored. The person from Texas, and I just want to say, in my opinion, Texas doesn't have anything to say, especially when it comes to the steno who is supposed to interpret what we have to say here in our City Council chamber. And I proposed it before, and I want to propose it again, that we don't hire a steno from Texas who doesn't know, who has no familiarity with the accents and the idiosyncrasies of the way we speak here in California, because it makes it difficult when somebody is trying to say something, or interpret what somebody's saying. This last week, some people got up there, and almost half of what they were saying was deleted from off of the closed caption. If you were hearing impaired, you couldn't understand anything they were saying at all. Most of the names and input was redacted just simply because the steno couldn't understand what the person is saying. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our public comment for today. The next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number three, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendale.
Mr. Rosendale, number three, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could we ask DOT to come on up and talk about the Department's rolling five-year plan identifying the necessary maintenance, upgrade, and technology? Do we have DOT in the room? Where are they? Hello?
Department of Transportation in chambers. Is DOT in chambers?
I put it on the desk, then.
We'll hold that on the desk. Next item, please.
Next item is item number four, and that was called special by Councilmember Coetz.
Mr. Coetz, number four, sir.
Actually, I called the special for a council member who may not be here yet, so I...
Who is that?
I think it's for Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Weezer is not going to be here till 11:00, according to the list. We'll hold that on the table.
Same too, as of number five and number 10.
We'll hold those for Mr. Weezer. He's expected to arrive at 11:00 o'clock. Madam Clerk, next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Number eight is also called special by Councilmember Rosendale.
Mr. Rosendale, number eight.
Yeah, number eight, we're ready to do right now, which is regarding Measure R, local returns. Come on up, Maria, and let's...
We have three cards on number eight.
Great, it would be great to...
It's already had a public hearing. If you wish to do it for three cards, it's up to you.
We can take the three cards first. Go ahead, Anderson.
All right, Dorothy Lee.
Hi, councilmembers. I just wanted to affirm the 10% for bicycle and pedestrians. I'm Dorothy from Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, and I really look forward to the yes vote on the full 10% for bicycles and pedestrians. It's been a long time coming. I think we are seeing that there are a lot of bicycle and pedestrian projects ready to go that will use the full 10%, and that there are a number of people in Los Angeles that are really waiting to see projects on the ground, and waiting to see this money being allocated for bicycles and pedestrians. And I really hope that this decision that you make today is a sign that the city is really transforming into a place that's more livable and healthy, and this allocation of money is a tangible way you can show that. So, thank you so much.
Just thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. The city prides itself on its openness, well, the City Council, on its openness and its transparency. Yet, when I was at the County Board of Supervisors yesterday, and I mentioned the problem with Measure R, and the way that its funding is allocated. On March 25th, the MTA Board allocated funding for a Measure R project for the Gold Line extension. They allocated the funding to the Blue Line Construction Authority to build the Gold Line. That's what they did at the MTA Board. The L.A. Times wrote about it on 3/26. With the Thursday vote, $690 million in revenue for Measure R will be transferred to the Gold Line Construction Authority. But they allocated it to the Blue Line Construction Authority. The transit coalition wrote a newsletter. They said, specifically, "The Metro Board approved the funding agreement with the foothill extension Gold Line and Construction Authority." But again, the board allocated it to the Blue Line Construction Authority. And finally, with public money, Metro put advertising in the L.A. Times and in the Downtown News. $810 million agreement reached between Metro and the Metro Gold Line foothill extension. That's public money being spent to lie. There's your openness and transparency. There's your openness and transparency. And yet this ship will sail on like the Titanic, hit the bottom of the floor, and everybody will say, "Who knew? Who cares? What the hell? We're open and transparent." It's a farce. Who's getting the money? The Blue Line? The Gold Line? Or your pockets?
David Gatsin.
Hello, my name is David Gatsin, and I'm with the Los Angeles County Bike Coalition. And we're really interested in getting the 10% for bicyclists and pedestrians, and we'd like to make it 10% combined, because a lot of, instead of 5% for bicyclists and 5% for pedestrians, because a lot of this stuff is kind of combined anyway, you know, like bike paths, a lot of them are used for both things. This way, it's a little bit easier to split up the money. And I think there's a lot of benefits, you know, to riding bicycles, like health and keeping the traffic down, and pedestrians also. And a lot of the places in the city that are actually very popular do not have any cars, like, well, this is actually not in our city, but it's, one example is like in Santa Monica, the Third Street Promenade. If you go anyplace in Santa Monica, it's like one of the nicest places, and one of the reasons is because there's no cars there. And we'd like to see more bike lanes built, and I guess that's it.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick overview, folks. This will come back again in budget and in the process, but we'd like to get a little temperature read of how some of you feel about this. Eighty-five percent of the $40 billion anticipated for Measure R go to rail and highway projects. The other 15% is local return money that is divided among 88 cities. Los Angeles's portion of that revenue is about $35 million annually, and out of that, I'm asking that we set aside 10% for bike and pedestrian improvements, flexibility in how that works, which is roughly $3.5 million a year. That 3.5 of this total county anticipated revenues is up about $850 million each year. That's the least we can do, frankly, in my opinion, for cycling, to get it going, start working with a budget, start making things happen. Before I go into the bike projects and stuff, I'd like us to get an overview from staff as to what this is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ron Truitt with the CLA's office. What you have before you is a joint CLA/CAO report on the use of the Measure R funds, which the city started receiving just this fiscal year. The table on page four really captures the recommendations, which were changed just in a minor way in T-Committee. So just in general, for the Measure R return, we've outlined for the next five years what the expected revenue will be. We have set aside some money for the 3% accelerated local match was included in this fiscal year's budget and is the seed for the 3010 program that the mayor is putting forward. The discretionary categories we've outlined are with the Bureau of Street Services. $4.5 million was allocated this year to deal with additional sidewalk access ramps and bus pads, and there's also an appropriation in the mayor's proposed budget for the continuation of an accelerated sidewalk access ramp program. We have a one-time appropriation for the bridge program that was identified last fiscal year to complete a match for $350 million for the Sixth Street Bridge. As was discussed, we have a 10% set aside for bicycle and pedestrian program. Originally, it was 5% each, but the committee decided to roll that together, so it'd be a 10% set aside. We also have $1 million for program contingency, and then a $5 million administrative cost, which gives you to, gets you to a subtotal. And the big issue that we've been working on over the last six months, primarily through the CAO's office, is identifying what our shortfall is for Prop C. These are the projects that the city has already committed to doing through the Safe Frost School for Call for Projects and things like that. And unfortunately, for next fiscal year, we have about an $18.7 million deficit, so in order to complete these projects, we need to backfill that, and that is what we are recommending in the report. Generally, these recommendations are reflected in the mayor's proposed budget with one exception. We have one project, the Harbor Gateway ATZAC project, which is about $9.9 million that's identified in the mayor's proposed budget for the rest of the Prop's Measure R money. So with that, I'll conclude. If the CAO wanted to add anything to that.
Thank you. I'm David Ronna with the Office of the CAO. The CLA summary was just about perfect. We have, we obviously concur with the recommendations outlined by the CLA. I'd also like to highlight that we have also made a recommendation that the council consider a policy direction that would limit themselves to funding capital improvements out of this Measure R to the greatest extent possible, to avoid creating a situation we've run into with Proposition A and C, where we now have deficits due to growing operating programs that exceed the revenue growth. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, for one note, that we didn't say for the item, what is it, nine that's on the agenda as well, that deals with the line-by-line and the Prop A deficit. We are not recommending any backfill of the Prop A deficit with any Measure R money.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we discussed this at length in the committee. We had a joint T-Committee in Budget and Finance, and my concern on this issue is that without any real scientific evaluation, we just decided to put a 10% mandate for Peds and Bikes. This dollar value on this amount of money is finite. It's going to be somewhere on a range of 20 to 30 million a year. So without districts having an equal proportion of bicycles, it would appear that it's an overallocation for specific areas that may have a bike issue. And so what we, a couple of us in the committee said, it would be more appropriate to move it, change the language, to up to 10%. Then you're not tying down that you have Peds projects that are at 5%, which would impact citywide, that you could move higher than the 5% if you don't have sufficient number of bike issues that are competing on a citywide basis. This number was just identified, it wasn't done in the sense of DOT going out analyzing what the bike population is. We do not have any information of what the citywide issue is on bikes, but we're taking citywide funds of 10% out of a very finite, small amount of money. It really reduces our flexibility on a year-to-year basis of how we're going to use this money. And the other issue is that some projects that may be significantly higher-valued in this Measure R pool will get denied because we have an artificial 10% issue. And so these are things that I'd like to bring up for further consideration, in that we go to a more flexible, up to 10%. Clearly, it's established as a goal in the funding mandates that we're going to be looking to put those in, but if those projects are not ready to go, if those projects are not as significant as others, then we should be dealing with, again, it's not an unlimited amount of money, we should be dealing with the projects that affect citywide with a finite amount of money. And even within the category of Peds, pedestrian, and bikes, we need to be aware that pedestrians affect all of us, bikes do not affect all of us. And so even within that category, you may want to have a higher percentage of Peds kinds of projects, because bikes do not come to the same level. So my motion is that we change the 10% and move, and change the wording to up to 10%, which clearly sends a message, it's a priority of the city, but it clearly gives us the flexibility on a budget that we need.
Seconded by, seconded by Ms. Perry. Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, I strongly disagree with this change. I've watched this issue for about 35 years. I first started watching it in 1975, and we've dramatically underfunded bicycle lanes. We've done very little over that time. And we're hitting a time when bicycling, again, has become incredibly popular, but a lot of folks really can't maximize their usage of bicycles, and often will take them to work because they can't get there safely in traffic. So it's about time that we allocated some real dollars. There's plenty of projects. We have a plan that has plenty of places for us to put this money. I think we actually have to start doing something in this regard. It's one other good way to get people out of their cars, and there are a lot of folks that do want to get onto their bikes, but they can't do it safely. And so it's about time that we start moving in this direction. I think it's a great idea, and changing it, I think, is just backing off and going back to where we've been all these years, which is to do very little in this regard.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise to support what Mr. Parks was saying and extrapolate a little more upon that. First of all, you're talking about some pedestrian improvements and sidewalk projects as well. Have any of you talked to Bureau of Street Services, see if they can do that?
Councilman, we did talk with the Bureau of Street Services, and this is within their capabilities to do.
How can they do that when they are losing 400 of their 800 people, and we're doing no sidewalk work whatsoever next year? None.
What we're doing is we're programming them for sidewalk access ramps, and the people that were, a good portion of the people that were doing sidewalk work are the cement finishers, carpenters, and those people are going to just transition over to focusing on the sidewalk access ramps at this point in time.
Okay, so you're picking up the salaries for those people to keep them in the budget?
Yes.
100%?
Yes.
Including?
Including overheads.
Overhead, okay. Secondly, we're talking about 10%. I have no problem with, some people think I do, but I don't have a problem with bike programs. What I have a problem with is setting a goal of an absolute number when we don't have projects to meet that absolute number. We asked the committee, and I'll ask it again for the rest of this floor, do we have projects to equal that amount of money next year for bike programs?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know that yet. So we're going to allocate money for a program we don't have in exchange for programs that are underfunded, things we want to do and can't do, but we're going to allocate a set of money, a budget for a program which has no program yet. We're going to fund a program, but there's no program. Okay. That is the silliest budgeting I've ever seen, and that is the kind of stuff, we've got to stop, folks, budgeting for programs we want to do when there's no program. That is not the way you do it. And I think Mr. Parks' initial comments were correct. We should say up to 10%. Let them come forward, programs and projects and ideas, we'll fund it up to 10% without allocating money that we don't have for programs that aren't there yet. That's not the way we should be doing it.
Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I think the suggestion that we set aside money for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure improvements is not an issue of flexibility. The past practice has been, the policy has been, "We'll take care of it later. We'll do it later." And guess what? It never gets done. You want to know why there's not a lot of bicyclists in L.A.? Because there's no bicycle infrastructure. It's dangerous out there. I think the statistics show that L.A. wants to be able to ride bikes, they want to be able to walk to work, they want to be able to walk in their community, but it's not always friendly. The signal timing on the crossing the streets, sometimes in senior communities, is way too fast for seniors. I was in, what city was it? Well, I was in a city, and the crosswalk took 50 seconds. I couldn't believe it. When I got to the crosswalk, the number on the "Don't Walk" thing said 38 seconds, and I said, "38 seconds? That's insane." But you know why they did it? Is so that people who had trouble getting across the street had time to get across the street, particularly if it was very crowded. I think this is forward-thinking policy. We need to dedicate 10% to make pedestrians and bicyclists more comfortable, more safe, and more user-friendly in the city of Los Angeles. We have a bicycle path in the northeast San Fernando Valley that hasn't been finished. So why would somebody get on the bicycle and go to, I think it's just before Tony's district, and then stop at the DWP plant? I mean, if they want to go on the bicycle path and really get directions, they'd want to go all the way to Burbank. I mean, it just doesn't work. Now, I've also said that more and more of our population are using bicycles to get to work, because it makes a lot of sense. And the transit system is not the best way for them. Yesterday, we had a conversation about using bicycle-friendly planning, and I think if we're going to do the bicycle-friendly planning, it would be helpful if we had some money to back it up. And so this is exactly what that is. This is not sticking our head in the sand and saying we don't want the correct statistics, but you know, I don't need statistics to know that some doctor up in the hills killed, almost killed, a couple of bicycle riders not too long ago. That tells me that people want to ride their bikes, but it's dangerous out there. So I believe that this is forward-thinking policy, and I believe that this will be good for Los Angeles. It will make us more pedestrian-friendly, it will make us more cycling-friendly, it will reduce our carbon footprint in doing so, and it is just the right thing to do. And so I strongly, strongly support the 10% set aside to improve our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. The colleagues, when I think of pedestrian bicycle needs, I just want to put this in the context. In the past five years, we built two major high schools within four blocks on Center City West, just outside of downtown. And every day, hundreds and hundreds of high school students take their life into their hands because the sidewalks have not been widened, we don't have safe passages, we don't have ways in which the new middle schools, the new grammar schools that were built in the areas of East Los Angeles and South Los Angeles, and just in the Pico-Human, Westlake area, where there are no safety measures being put in real design, real construction because of the lack of money. So if I need to show you projects that could be spent in the next year or two, we'll probably pass the amount of money that's being contemplated with that 10%. Now, I'm just speaking to the new infrastructural changes that have occurred because of the amazing amount of new schools that have been built, that right now are unsafe passages for many of our students, many of our children in the city. Now, when we look at the bridges, the bridges have been redesigned so we can connect to the Los Angeles River, so that we can have a continuous bike path that goes from the valley all the way through downtown city, central L.A., down to the southern portion of Los Angeles. And this runs through, I believe, six to seven council districts. Every bridge needs new funds to connect to the river, to connect to the street system, so we can have a continuum, a direct line that allows bicyclists to go from the valley area through Los Angeles, and we don't have the money for that. Right now, we are in the middle of construction, the second phase of a bike path that goes from Councilmember Garcia's district in Miami all the way up to Tom LaBanc's district. That's taken 10 years out of legal issues. The actual construction is occurring now, and we're doing the Volkswagen version, we're not doing the Cadillac version. And that Cadillac version means putting in the kind of safety measures that make it comfortable for people to use their bikes. So colleagues, we could use that 10%. And I'm sorry to hear from our staff that we have not identified that dollar amount, but that dollar amount exists, believe me, because of the projects that have been either downscaled, have been changed because of lack of funds. Our bridges alone could absorb those funds and essentially move on those projects like today. The bike path running from the valley into Los Angeles along the River Master Plans or pathway is in the millions and millions of dollars. So believe me, we could spend this money, we can connect and establish a spine, a bicycle path that runs throughout the city that allows us to have the safety of not conflicting or crashing or having cars hit bicyclists and pedestrians, and actually begin to develop from that spine into a network into all the neighborhoods. And that's something that's very real and doable today. So I would vote to have the hard facts 10%, so we can spend that money as soon as possible and send a clear message. And I'm not saying that my other colleagues are saying we don't agree with it, I'm just saying we need to put our money where our mouth is and spend that money for bicyclists and pedestrian safety, because we really need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, thank you. I think, from what I understand, what Councilmember Parks said on his motion and the reason why I seconded it was, I don't ever remember Bernard Parks saying that he hates bicycles or pedestrians or what have you. What I think he's speaking to is the budget process, which Councilmember Smith spoke to as well, and that is, if you have a limited amount of resources, as the city does overall right now, and you have a category of funds, like the funds that are in this motion here, and if we lock ourselves in to say that we will use these funds in this fiscal budget year, this exact amount, if we allow the language to go forward in that manner and we don't use that exact amount, then the rest of the money just sits there, and it can't be used for equally appropriate projects that legally can be used for. The money just sits there. So in a roundabout way, what we're doing is, by not saying "up to that amount" and just saying "that exact amount," what we're doing is, we are creating a reserve fund at a time where, if we're going to create a reserve fund, let's just call it that. But why would we be creating a reserve fund where there are other transportation legal projects that might be ready to go in this fiscal year that technically speaking are not competing with bicycle or pedestrian projects that aren't ready to go this year? And we can actually expend those dollars on appropriate legal projects and get things done for our constituents as we speak in the fiscal year in which we budgeted it. Now, if we're going to create a reserve fund just for pedestrian and bicycle use, then let's just call it that. But by accident, that's what we're doing if we say "that exact amount."
Yeah, let me clarify. When I said we don't have projects for this money, I mean, we do have a bikeways program in DOT. There are projects identified, bikeway and pedestrian projects. What I meant was, we don't have a work plan for this money, so that's why the recommendation in the original report was, okay, if you set aside the money, then DOT would come back with a work program. So I'd like DOT to respond to what projects they have right now and whether they would be able to spend the money that the 10% would be set aside for.
Within this current budget year.
Well, 1011. I mean, we're pretty much done with this year.
Yes, it's a budget year, not the current year, but the budget year.
You know, we have the Michael Wenno Department of Transportation. We have a bicycle master plan that's out there, ready to be approved. Once it's approved, there are a number of projects in there that can be easily done. We're looking at what we call bike-friendly streets that would require minor modifications to streets. So those would be projects that could be easily done within the next one or two years.
Okay, but hold on, you're on my time, so I only have so many seconds to ask you a question, then you can continue talking. But the thing is, my point is, by saying "up to that amount," and if you actually plan and actually implement those amount of projects that will use up all of that money, then we are saying the same thing. What I'm saying is, if for some reason some of those wonderful plans cannot be implemented in this budget year, then why reserve that money for something that's not going to happen in this budget year? Why not use the remainder of that money for projects that can be done in this budget year? That's my point. I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I think you're accurate, it's appropriate, so the department's responsibility is to go ahead and show what can be done in this budget year. And if it meets or exceeds that amount, then you'll be using up all that money, and the "up to" part has been met, "up to that amount." Right? Thank you.
Mr. Huizar.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President. You know, our city, as all of us know, is famous for its gridlock and smog because of our level fare with our cars. And belated attempts to get a functional public transit system, I think, has resulted in a patchwork of rail lines and a patchwork of public bus systems that need to be better coordinated. Comes in Measure R that will change all that. A lot of funding that I think puts the city of Los Angeles and the region ahead of the curve in relation to a lot of the other regions of the United States that have attempted to do this in the past. And I think it's a very good thing. This local return money that we have here, I think the intent was for new projects. You can make an argument, but I've been told it's lucid. You could see it a number of ways. My concern with our proposal and recognizing the economic times that we're in, my concern is the backfilling. And I would hope that as we move forward, I know we've proposed here five years, although we're just adopting a one-year plan, we have some forecasting in our report about five years, that we do attempt to move away from the backfilling that we're doing. I know it's necessary, I know it's needed, but we should make all attempts to move away from backfilling. Secondly, with respect to the bike plan, you know, yesterday we passed a motion to create a new bike corral in Highland Park, the first that the city has done. I suspect that even if we don't have all the funding available for our bike plan that we're anticipating to implement at some point, we could use funding for bike corrals or other support systems for bikes in our city, correct? So we don't have to just say, hey, we don't have a plan yet, why are we putting this money aside? There's a lot of other needs out there to support bikes in our city. That doesn't mean we need a plan in place to have this continuous bike lanes throughout the city. We don't need that yet. There's a lot of need out there for supporting bike use that doesn't necessarily mean we need that bike lane. So a bike corral is just one of many other ways we could go about that. So I support the 10% set aside, because I think it will do a lot to address that smog and gridlock that we've been talking about. It directly hits at some of the big problems that Measure R was trying to get rid of. So that's good. I do have one question in my final 30 seconds. New projects or capital projects as identified in this report, will those be decided by the Transportation Department, or will those be council-approved projects? And if they're council-approved projects, when will we see them so that we have some say in what funding is going to what capital projects?
It's done in a variety of ways in terms of identifying future new capital projects. A lot of that is done through the Call for Projects, Safe Road to School, where we identify the match funds we need and we go to seek additional funds. So we do it that way. Even those come to council before they're ever approved or submitted, I should say.
Okay. So the projects will come back to council for approval, but we won't know until those projects come back whether we're using Measure R local return money or not. Can we come up with a plan beforehand so we know where the money is going, as opposed to, there's this project out there and we're going to attach some local return money? Because we're not going to see the overall plan as to how we're spending this money. It's going to be piecemeal.
Okay, I think the answer to your question is it depends. On some of the projects that DOT is submitting to MTA through the normal call, they do have to come up with some kind of match funding. Normally, we provide--
Have come up with what?
They have to come up with fund funding or match funding, and normally we go to Prop C to do that. Temporarily at least, we are proposing that the council can accelerate some of those projects by also providing some of the match out of Measure R. You have the opportunity during the budget process to make that decision.
So we don't have a list of projects yet, right?
We can provide you with a list after the meeting if you'd like.
So we do have a list of projects, available new projects?
Yes.
And at some point, they're going to have to come for council approval.
Right. And when you adopt the budget this year, you will be adopting, hopefully, a policy or a budget statement that says, this is how much Measure R money we want to use--
By adopting this report today, and I'm sorry for cutting you off because our time is limited, by adopting this report today, we already have a separate list of new capital projects that this money will go towards.
By adopting this report today, you're kind of giving policy guidance. I believe to formally adopt a budget for 1011, you have to do it through the budget process. And I believe this subject will be coming up later in the week before Budget and Finance Committee. There are other projects that have no funding that could come in through Measure R that you would definitely have the ability to provide funding for and review prior to establishing the Measure R budget.
Are those new projects, or are those projects that we're just filling in?
Well, for example, some of the bicycle and pedestrian projects that you're talking about that don't have funding, you have an opportunity as a body to determine whether the funding from Measure R should be applied to those projects and to review those projects.
Got it. If you could please forward us those lists of anticipated projects that will receive the local return money to us.
We will.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Kerkorian.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, throughout the San Fernando Valley and really throughout the city, we have prevalence of speeding traffic, which is forcing the city to increase posted speed limits throughout the city because of the state's speed trap law, a law which, by the way, I tried my best to change when I was a member of the legislature. Came up a little bit short on that. But the city routinely says, well, there's nothing we can do. We have to increase these posted speed limits because we're forced to do so by state law. And that increased speed is endangering the lives of pedestrians and bicyclists throughout our city. Well, here's something that the city can do. If we can't do anything to restrict those increased speeds, we can invest the money that needs to be invested in creating bicycle lanes and doing other things that will create increased safety for bicyclists and increased safety for pedestrians. We also have a situation now in a time when we're suffering through recession and job loss and people are losing their homes and people are becoming less and less able to pay for their own cars and even public transit. And right now, on today's agenda, we're going to be voting on changes, a report that proposes changes in public transit subsidies. More and more of our citizens are going to be dependent upon bicycles and walking. And now is exactly the time when we ought to be investing more in those sorts of measures to make their transportation safer. Now, I understand the concern about set-asides, especially in a tough budget time, but sometimes set-asides are necessary to ensure that we do the work that would otherwise be set aside. And too often, these sorts of orphan programs that don't have enough popular support, don't have enough political support, get set aside and deferred year after year after year after year if you don't have a hard set aside. So while I agree with the concerns that Mr. Parks and Mr. Smith have raised about not having budgeting done without some data and without some formulas, we do that often, whether it's deferred maintenance requirements, other sorts of things which are not popular but which have to be done. We do have set-asides for those. And in the same way, I think we'd need a hard set aside for pedestrian and bicyclist safety. And the amending language of having up to 10% in fact would act as a ceiling. It may turn out, as we look at this, that maybe 10% is not the right number. Maybe 12% is. Maybe 15% is. And by putting a ceiling on this with that kind of amending language, we would deprive ourselves of that kind of budgeting flexibility as well. So I can't support that. Finally, this is for one fiscal year, 2010, 2011. This recommendation provides that at the end of that fiscal year, we review this, we determine whether or not that formula is right, whether it's feasible, and we can revisit this issue then. But I say, let's not put this off. Let's make the hard set aside right now and start getting busy on some of these projects that will save people's lives.
Mr. Laban.
Thank you. Give me a full 30-second overview right now, what we're talking about. I want to see how good you are, Mike.
One of the elements in the bicycle plan that is relatively easy to implement are the bike-friendly streets. A lot of it could just be assigning. Some of the bike-friendly streets will involve much more, but there will be a lot that all we have to do is sign, make them available.
Are you working on clusters, or how you do it at citywide?
I'm sorry?
How are you doing it? Are you working on, I believe in clusters, meaning you look at the northeast Los Angeles area, Occidental College, York Boulevard, Eagle Rock Boulevard, Colorado Boulevard--
Maybe clusters or maybe routes, long, long, continuous routes.
I understand that, but you can't get long, long things done in Los Angeles to try to serve everybody as well. I would just suggest to the professionals at the table that you look at clusters, whether it's Highland Park Occidental, USC Downtown, UCLA Westwood, in that sense there, and then other areas, whether it's parks in the Sepulveda Basin, look at the long streets of the valley to try to create that. When's the plan for the bikeway along the Orange Line? We forgot that because we wanted to get the Orange Line built. Where's that plan?
The Orange Line?
Yeah, the bikeway on Chandler. It's there. I mean, you haven't done anything. I'm just saying. I'm not to be critical, but I think the pressure I think council and people feel is we are 2010, and just the other day it was 2,000. And boom, all these things we're trying to achieve. But I just don't think we could get them unless we try to put our arms around it. And it's tough to put around 700 from Wilmington and San Pedro all the way to Chatsworth unless you look at clusters. So, and I know Michelle Mallory, I don't know if she's here, but she's been an advocate for that area. I'm going to push my button again. I was out of council on city business for a moment, but thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. You know, I know, these are tough budget decisions that we're making, and I sort of agree that while we certainly need to focus on this effort for bicycles and for the safety of our cyclists, I do think we don't have a good sense of how much money that is actually should be, can be, and will be budgeted. I like the idea of having a up to, you know, the percentage number. And colleagues, I love my bike riders, but I have a problem with this. And then going to item nine, which is not here, there's been a recommendation that you eliminate weekday services after 7:00 p.m. for my Wilmington Dash. So I look at that, and that upsets me a little bit. And then I look at this percentage we're giving to the bike riders, and that's my only problem. These are decisions, these are priorities, but it's hard for me to say yes on one and then look at my riders in Wilmington on the Dash who are now going to get service eliminated so many hours per week. So until I can get a better sense of our real budgetary priorities, particularly for bicycles, I would tend to support the up to, the percentage that we're proposing today instead of a definite amount. And then I'm happier to support that. It's going to be hard for me to make the case to my folks in Wilmington on why their Dash service is being eliminated. So it's priorities, it's decisions, these are very tough. But I don't like looking down at item nine and seeing what the recommendation was for my Dash service in Wilmington. It's hard for me to support this proposal.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I just, I realize, I think, we've done tremendous work on this council in broadening what we look at in transportation. If I think of some of the most dynamic communities I represent, Tom and I share both Atwater Village and Silver Lake, which are wonderful places now to bike in and to walk in. We put a pedestrian overlay district in Atwater Village that literally brought the economic development back of what used to be just a, really a car-focused street on Glendale Boulevard there. Because now, you know, people would speed through there, but through a few improvements that we made, it's now a place with cafes, a place with shops, a place where people reduce their carbon footprint because they don't get into a car to go out to dinner or to go shopping. Up to 10% is a good idea, and I understand why people would say that, but to me, that also means it could be 0% and it could be 1%. And it's time that we draw the line in the sand and say what we stand for. And that we believe, you know, I've been waiting for a year and a half to get a few painted arrows and bicycles on the street called sherros. It's an unacceptably too long time to wait. And meanwhile, we've seen the bicycle community, for instance, bypass our thinking here at City Hall. When you look at the number of people who are getting together and they're on the streets and they're enjoying, they're contributing to all of our well-being. And what we're saying here is, no, let's wait. You might get up to 10%, but we know if we don't put a specific percent in there, we won't get that 10%. Because then what that does is it opens up other projects, and I think that every single person who can go by foot or by bike in the city helps everybody in a car. And until we start thinking that way, I think it's going to be very dangerous for us to make that sort of commitment. It's only for the first year. This is one year we're talking about. We're not talking about the life of Measure R right now, but let's try to be brave in the first year instead of tentative. Let's be bold instead of taking baby steps. And I certainly would like to keep that staff recommendation. I think the fact that staff has come up and met that and recommended that is something that we should take very seriously. And if we want to have a better city everywhere, from San Pedro to the San Fernando Valley, we have to protect-- we have to protect all the schools that we've built and the kids that are walking to those schools. We almost cut out our crossing guards. We need to have safe passages for all those schools. We can't do those without pet improvements in Measure R. And we can't have a healthier and a less congested city without bicycles finally having their place on the table, too. So just wanted to rise to support that.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Now, you can stay here, Tony. You're quite right. We all work together here. Just make a couple of quick comments. I appreciate all the dialogue that's taken place here. It shows everybody's committed. But let me just give some facts. We have a Bicycle Master Plan that will be approved later this year that will designate 1,500 miles of new bikeways. Part of that plan will be to prioritize and implement strategy that will set the goals of implementing 200-mile section over five years. We're actually putting our numbers out there to get something done. This small amount of set aside will allow us to do the environmental work and meet our targets of expanding our bikeway network. Now is the time to act, to plan for the future. Now, there's other...thank you, clap for that. We're also facing compliance with AB 32 and SB 375 as we need to start making improvements that will reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Nothing better than bicycling to get rid of greenhouse gas. Investments in bicycle and pedestrian improvements are cheap, comparatively speaking. The U.S. Secretary of Transportation, Ray Lahoud, said, "This is the end of favoring motorized transportation at the expense of non-motorized." This is a historic moment for our city to say that a bicycle is as important as a car. Because we built all the roads, but what about the bicycle? Okay? We need to get our act together here locally to capitalize on opportunities that will arise at the federal level and give people alternatives to driving their automobiles. Let me just say this. Up to 10% is certainly okay, but the idea of the 3.5 million now committed and going forward and put plans together that work means that we've taken it so serious that we're actually going to do it. Mr. Garcetti said for a year and a half, he's been fighting for this, people have been fighting for that. So in a friendly way, I would like very much for us to move forward with this as-is with the flexibility of that 10% so that the staff can come back with plans of how it's spent. Now, I know staff has one big issue, and obviously it's the biggest issue all of us are facing in the city, is personnel. Do we have the people in DOT that will help us move forward with it? And Maria, will this help us move in that direction? How do we deal with that issue as well?
Well, if you...we're not sure. I mean, we'll have to talk about that with the department and then through the budget discussion. But if you provide an additional over $5 million, I don't think there will be enough people in DOT right now. But that's something we need to look at and possibly fund additional staff with the Measure R money to bring more projects online. And the planning department is also involved with the bike plan. So if you adopt the recommendations, we'll come back with a work plan. And then, you know, how much money is up to you is a policy decision, whether it's up to, whether it's 10%, a hard and fast number, and we'll come back with a work plan for you.
Very good. Your partner who's sitting to your left there, tell us a little bit about where we are as a city on bike paths and where we need to go and the leadership you're providing on it.
We have a long way to go.
We have a long way to go, okay.
You know, Los Angeles grew up around the automobile, and most of our facilities were designed for automobiles. We've squeezed as much as we can out to the exclusion of other alternatives. And, you know, what we have, you know, the bicycle-friendly streets I talked about in the plan are, most of them will be easy projects to implement. Some of them will be difficult because we're going to have to provide space for the bicyclists, but at the same time not allow that facility to be used by traffic, automobiles for cut-through traffic. In terms of bicycle lanes, you know, we have streets that are striped for automobiles now. If we want to put bicycle lanes, there are only a handful of places where we can put bicycle lanes without having to take either sidewalk or additional property or an existing lane. And so we're going to need to have decisions made on those issues if we're going to put bike lanes in those streets. Bike paths are very difficult because we don't often have long linear pieces of property that are available for us to dedicate for exclusive use of bike lanes, of bike paths. We have, you know, some railroad right-of-way, a lot of it is still being used and there's not enough room to share. We have the rivers. The rivers have problems also because the bridges over the rivers didn't provide room underneath the bridges so that we could get bicycles through. So those are kind of the issues that we have with the plan as it stands, I think.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Alakon, I really appreciated your comment about what happened in Mandi-Vulcanion. That was frankly my wake-up call. When I saw that happen, I put the Bicyclist Bill of Rights forward and have taken a lot more leadership. I think the day has come where bicyclists and bicycling should be respected as much as a car or train or a bus or any other form of transportation. And by saying that statement today, moving forward with this, we are putting our money where our mouth is. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, when we dealt with this issue initially in key committee, I was one of those that was on the committee that actually said we needed a percentage of money for Peds and bikes. The issue is, and we talked about infrastructure and a variety of things, but I think as we've heard these conversations unravel here today, is that many of you are discussing against your own interests. In this document today, they say it's 10%, 5 for Peds, 5 for bikes. If the need is where you think it is, and all of a sudden this next year, if you have 8% or 10% of bikes, you could only fund 5%. And so the issue is, what we're saying is, give yourself flexibility. And anyone that believes that we're going to put in a report up to 10% and come in with zero, shame on us if we do something like that. This is the first time we've dedicated an item. We have to realize the money is a finite amount of money. And if we are going to use it to the best of our ability, why put limits on a situation to where if you come up with these projects and say bikes are worth 20% of the fund? What are we going to do? Tell them no because we're going to go spend the money on some projects that are not as worthy because they didn't meet the criteria of the 10%? These are things I think we have to look at, just as our general fund is. You keep it as fluid and as flexible as possible to give you an option of spending the money to the best interest of the community. And so, again, as we move forward on this, I would suggest that we do not set hard and fast figures that we see. Another thing we have to be concerned about, the money is not coming in as rapidly as people perceive. Because people's sales taxes down, just as this, what, half percent sales tax is down, just like all the sales tax. So what you're basically looking at is a dwindling and dwindling amount of money until the economy turns around. And so we could argue about 11 million or 18 million. Again, until it comes in, you will not know. But to dedicate it a hard and fast dollar, you're defeating your own purpose of this issue. I have probably the most bikes anywhere in the city around USC. Certainly have an interest on Sheros down Adams Boulevard. But I'm not standing here saying, "Make sure that 2% goes to the 8th District." I'm saying, "Let's make sure we get the right projects that are ready to go. Let's spend the money to the best interest." And if you should find that these projects are much more significant than anything else in the Measure R, then let's spend it where it's appropriate. Don't limit ourselves on either side of the discussion. And so I would, again, the motion I have is that we go up to and as opposed to the hard and fast. Because I can tell you, having dealt with these budgets, lo and behold, as soon as these projects come forward, if they're Peds projects that are less than bikes, we're going to have people saying, "Can we slide it in there?" And you say, "Well, why would we set a limit at 5% rather than saying 10%? Up to 10% that includes Peds and bicycles." That's the whole issue of flexibility in how we spend our money.
Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, first, a lot of this debate has been about whether we can spend this full 10% or not. And I'd asked the DOT representative, "Is there any chance at all that we will be unable to expend the 10% on bikes and pedestrian needs, considering how much need there is out there? That we won't be able to implement that in time?"
You know, I'm not sure. It depends on what staffing becomes, is made available. I, you know, we have a bikeway unit. I think we can spend the bike money. We don't have an equivalent pedestrian unit. I'm not sure what pedestrian projects are out there within the department. You know, there are just a lot of open ends on this scale.
Now, the way we've structured this is no longer five on five. We're saying up to 10 combined. So ultimately, if there were no pedestrian projects, we could do the whole thing on bicycle projects. So is there any great likelihood that we wouldn't be able to expend this whole 10% considering that we could spend it all on bike projects if we didn't have sidewalk projects?
You know, again, it depends on staffing. I'm not sure whether we're going to have the staffing available. We're reorganizing now. I'm not aware of what, how the reorganization is going within this.
So if we provide the staffing, we certainly have the projects to do it.
Yes, I think so.
Okay, well, the one thing I might change, based on what Mr. Parks has suggested, is I think we have to have this minimal commitment. I would consider offering a substitute motion that we make the 10% a floor and we allow ourselves some flexibility to increase the bicycle and pedestrian funding. But we state that this is a minimum of 10% for pedestrian and bicycle funding in that project. And I will make that motion if there's a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Wait a second, hold on, Mr. Mr., hold on a minute. The clerk didn't hear what you were proposing.
I suggested that rather than setting aside 10% for bicycle and pedestrian funding, that we set aside a minimum of that 10% for bicycle and pedestrian funding and allow ourselves a little more flexibility upward if we decide that we would like to add a little bit on that end.
And I didn't hear a second on that. Okay.
Mr. Alakon, second. Mr. Coretts.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. President. As the proposal now stands, the 90% that is not, that would not be set aside for bicycle and pedestrian expenditures could also be spent on bicycle and pedestrian expenditures because it's not being appropriated or allocated to a specific purpose. So as it is now recommended, it would be a floor. It would be a 10% set aside with whatever we choose to spend them on the 90 as well, as I understand it. Unless someone corrects me otherwise, that's what I understand the current proposal to be. The proposal that's been suggested in Mr. Parks' amendment contains language that would say up to 10%. So that would create a hard ceiling. Without that language, there is no hard ceiling, and we could spend 10% or 12% or 20% on bicycle pedestrian.
Mr. Reyes, have you got a clarification on that?
No, that's actually not correct because if you look at the table we had in the report, it was a 10%. So if you were to go above that, you would be cutting into the other appropriations in the table as well as what's been proposed in the mayor's budget. So it is a 10%.
Then I'd like to second Mr. Coretts' motion.
All right. It was seconded by Mr. Alakon and Mr. Coretts. Mr. Reyes, thank you for the courtesy.
Thank you, Congressman President. Colleagues, when the fire department came to us a few months ago, I asked a question, "Do we have statistics, any kind of profile indicators that speak to the type of accidents and injuries that occur when they go out to a call?" And they didn't have the system at that time. Currently, and it'll be before us very soon, we will have the capacity to capture exactly what type of incident occurs on our streets, whether bicycle-related, pedestrian-related, auto-related. And those will be the type of information and data that allow us to start understanding what makes this a safe city. And when we look at these voting, when we look at these projects that we're beginning to vote on, I think those are the kinds of statistics we can fold in to try decision-making. Because we are talking about public safety. We are talking about areas in the city where you have 35, 40, 50,000 people per square mile in certain parts, and other parts you have 6,000 to 7,000. So what does that mean? That means there's more pressure and pockets that need more safety-type improvements in our urban scape to stimulate economic development, to create the kind of environments that make it desirable to be in these locations without having to use our vehicles. So I think this 10% as a floor, as a beginning point, is a very strong message and a healthy message at many different levels. So I just want to emphasize that we have a way to make our decisions based on public safety variables, understanding the fire department will play a role in helping us understand how to improve our city throughout all the districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labonge.
One thing, members, this is real important. You know, in the dark times that we're going to go through, how do you get the people to push things? I think we have to assign, in the proper way, commissioners who oversee these departments to be the voice for these goals that we want to achieve because they're not going to happen because everybody's challenged. The team is smaller than it was last season, and in order for us to win next season, we got to energize the team. In my committee, I will work with our parks and arts people to focus on all those areas. But in the transportation committee, one of us, Mr. Rosendahl, should go to that commission and ask that a commissioner, don't say committee, commissioner, be the person who says, "I'm going to be all about bikes. I'm going to be all about buses. I'm going to be all about rail," whatever the case may be. And also, I know Avak was here earlier, there was a motion that I had around, Avak, you're not listening, is that, third time for Avak not listening, but not unusual, to try to Mr. Garcetti have some reasonable committees that work in a regional area. Because nothing happens until you really push and push and push and make it happen. And I look at all your dedication there, but I also know behind you, you lost a lot of coworkers due to this downsizing of our government. So if we're going to achieve that, that's real important. In the mayor's budget is money for the Sixth Street Bridge. I don't want to see the Sixth Street Bridge torn down. I think it's horrible that they're going to try to make a modern bridge. We got to talk to the district representative. But in the budget, it says that. That's in this plan, too, right, Mike? It says it right here, Sixth Street Bridge, Harbor Gateway. I'm for that because Janice Hans worked so hard to get that front funding for the ADSEC program, which is so important. I am for what we talked about, Mr. Parks, I do love you, but I think if we have that money set aside, we will achieve it. If we keep going what we've done in the past, we won't achieve it. So I just believe it is good to do that, as my colleagues suggest. And then the Crenshaw Transit Quarter, that's real important. Expo line, light rail, all these things are important. And I think we also have to learn to do two things at once. Last night, my son called me, Charles. He said, "Dad, come home." And I came home, and he said, "I want to go to Griffith Park and play baseball." And we played baseball, he and I. I hadn't done it for a while. And Water Power was putting in a big pipe right down the middle of Griffith Park, down the road. And I thought, because the field was so hard and so dry, because water, why don't they extend the reclaim line and help Crystal Springs get green again? We got to learn to do two things at once. They're putting in one big line, why can't they lay another line? You're doing work on Crenshaw, why can't you think and do, and I know you think every day, Mike, I'm not talking about you personally, to do two things at once? Because on the Orange Line, which we were so championed to get and get done, we didn't do the bikeway at the same time. Now we're playing catch-up on Chandler and other parts of the valley. I spread you around the city quite quick there, only enough to have my great colleague from the 7th District be able to take over from right now. So I thank you. I think we got a plan, but to be successful, we got to tag commissioners with the focus of these various things. Because it's only our relationships and our teamwork effort that's going to be able to get these things done.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. And for the record, there is a bikeway along the Orange Line in Council District 3. Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Yes, I also concur with Mr. Parks that it's, that if we don't say at least 10%, then we won't spend it. So that's why I second Mr. Coretts' motion. I want to make sure that we are spending at least 10% of the money on Peds and bikeways. But I have to ask about the 90%. Is there anything in the report that precludes us from using it for Peds and bicycling improvements?
Is there anything in the legislation?
In the 90%?
I don't understand, I'm sorry.
In the report, is there anything in the report that precludes us from using the 90%? In the report, is there anything in the report that precludes us from using the 90% for bicycles or Peds?
You would have to then cut whatever has been recommended for all the other.
Is there anything? Let me repeat the question again. Is there anything in the report?
No.
Okay, so by doing this amendment, we could use the 90% money for Peds and bikes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Council members, I serve on the National League of Cities Transportation Steering Committee. And what I can tell you from the federal government is that they are developing policies that talk about creating complete streets. And I believe that much of the funding that will be coming down in the second half of the Obama first term in office will be directed toward the notion of... Mr. President, I can't even...
Mr. Alarcon is trying to explain something, and there are staff around the chambers carrying on conversations. And staff, you can't keep your voice down, you're going to have to go to the back room.
Thank you.
The back room's not the good room. Thank you.
All I wanted to say is that I believe that there will be considerable federal funding coming down that supports the notion of complete streets. And central to the notion of complete streets is the notion that cities far and wide, large and small, have neglected their bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. This is not a Los Angeles problem. This is a national problem. I believe the Obama administration recognizes it. They are lining up their ducks to create the funding stream to be able to address it. So I believe this is good policy. We are setting in place a dedicated amount of money that should federal money come down, we will be well-positioned to get that money quickly. And I believe just as we, on the safer paths to schools, because we had some aggressive programs in my district, for example, I said we need to do speed humps around schools, we were able to get that money because we had that policy in place and we had a program to build those speed humps quickly and effectively, and those speed humps are built now. So for the same reason, I believe there will be more money coming down for Peds and bikes infrastructure, and I believe that other money will come down to help us make this complete environment. In other words, just by improving the pedestrian infrastructure, we're not destroying the transit infrastructure or the other transportation needs. In fact, we should be enhancing it. That's the notion of complete streets. All of it should work synergistically together. Right now, we don't do that. It's part and parcel. Everything is parceled out differently, and I think this moves us more in the direction of creating those complete streets. So again, I seconded the motion by Kretz because it should be at least 10% because we are so far behind on our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And as we move forward, I think that's going to prove to be very wise policymaking for federal funding streams that will emerge in, I predict, the near future.
Mr. Kocorion. Mr. Kocorion?
I spoke.
He's going to pass. Ms. Hahn. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And again, one of the questions I was going to ask of that other 90%, is there anything that we've already decided or that's in the bill that would preclude money being used for current projects like dash systems?
No, there's not. It's very flexible money.
Okay. Yeah, again, that's good to know. I can support this, but I will tell you, on item nine, I'm going to fight to get my Wilmington Dash service completely restored because I don't want to vote for, even though I believe in new expanded programs, I don't want to take away services from people in parts of this city that completely depend on public transportation. So I'll be fighting for that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we passed out the budget for the Measure R that may be helpful so that we're not just guessing. And I'm just wanting to just be a little bit with Maria. The issue is, the only way that you can alter this is to change something else. And so to say that 90% is just free-flowing is not accurate. Already, if you look at 2010, 11, it's already in a deficit because the 3% accelerated match is there to get the 3010 program and other programs moving. The Bureau of Street Services dealing with sidewalk access is a legal issue for the city of Los Angeles. The bridge project is something in which it's been a priority. As you go through that and you look at administrative costs, you're sitting, and again, remember, we mentioned earlier, that the Prop C shortfalls are something absolutely essential that are covered. But when we look at this overall, these funds that are listed at the very top of the document would probably come in for less than that because sales tax has been dropping significantly. And so when you look at this, that's where the 100% is proposed. So when you say 90% is just there, then you'd have to go and cut a number of things or cut into some legally mandated or the issue of the accelerated program. You've had to find something to find the money. Plus, you'd have to be aware that the 32 million that's projected for 1011 is probably not going to get there. So it's clear that this is a very finite amount of money, depending on what the economy turns around, and then it depends on how flexible we are in using the money. And so again, the flexibility, in my judgment, is best that we leave some things open, put commitments, and talk about up to as opposed to a fixed amount. Because you will later find with the shortage of money and the mandates that are in this budget, you're not going to cover all of these issues. And so again, the issue for me, as far as the budget is looking at the flexibility, and I would go back to my original motion that we go up to and allow the flow of the revenue to come in and judge the use of the money on how well the projects are vetted, how well they are constructed, and put the best priority for the city of Los Angeles. But this is the factual information that's in the CLA's report about where the money is going. So we don't have to guess anymore. But again, do not leave this discussion believing you have free rein over the 90% unless you're willing to cut some of these line items.
Mr. Weezer.
So we have two motions on the floor, correct? One is to do at least, actually, it's three options. One is to accept the Department of Transportation's report, which is a 10% set aside. One is to do the at least 10% for, we're all talking about bikes. And Mr. Parks' motion was to clarify it? Up to, up to 10%. And, you know, I would suggest that we continue with the Department of Transportation's report. As Mr. Parks just finished, there are a lot of needs, and I talked about backfill. We're going to have to continue backfill for some time. By us doing the 10% set aside, we're committing ourselves to getting on a path to do more for bikes, something that the city hasn't done. But at the same time, we got to start somewhere. And so I think adopting the Department of Transportation's report is the middle ground to allow us to get started, make a full commitment, but not sacrifice any of the other funding that we need in this report. But at the same time, making a full commitment that we're going to start and continue to support bike use expansion in the city of L.A. So I would ask that we do the Department of Transportation report and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you. I know this is a very important topic, but as I see the downsizing of the planning department, we look at the land use implications, we look at variances, specific plan changes, many of these projects will require that type of attention. Have we factored in the ancillary impact and how we need to move these kinds of projects, whether it be pedestrian, bicycle, or auto-related in terms of our infrastructure? Have we had that analysis and understanding what general plan changes we require to adopt these physical improvements throughout the city? Has there been that type of discussion yet?
No, I think the bike plan comes close to that, at least for Bike Ways.
Okay, so here we are analyzing a multimillion-dollar budget plan, but we're not certain if we have digested the level of planning work needed to implement. Would that be accurate?
I'm not sure what planning work would be necessary to do everything in the plan. The bicycle stuff.
I know the bicycle plan has been thoroughly vetted, it's been sitting there for years. All it needed was money for it to be realized. But there are other projects in Measure R that require planning-related functions and resources. So am I hearing you correctly that we have not factored in that cost?
You know, looking at the list of projects, I mean, the sidewalk access ramps and bus pads, I don't think involve planning. That's going to be a street services function. The bridge program...
That's just a small amount for a match. So I don't think there's going to be a lot of planning work that needs to be done because we don't have a lot of brand-new projects identified. Most of the Measure R money needs to backfill Prop C, and those are projects that are ongoing, and we're doing that kind of work right now.
Well, for the sake of clarity, I'd like a report back on the level of planning required for implementation. I think each one of us in respective districts, it would be very disheartening to see that we have the money, we have the concept, we have the consensus, but it's going to take one, two, three years to go through the EIR or to go through the specific plan change or do the general plan amendments needed for implementation. And that's a variable that we need to understand, given that 40% of the planning department, as it stands now, will not be available to us the next few years due to EREP and everything else that's happening with the budget. So I'd like a report back on that, and I'll work with the chair of the Transportation Committee. We're going to do a joint committee that addresses that very real need when it comes to implementation.
Okay.
So can I get a report back? Is that a yes?
Yes.
And who would deliver that? CLA?
It would probably be DOT and Planning.
Okay.
With us, I mean, we're all working together to figure out how we're going to spend this on what projects and how quickly we can move forward.
I want to understand the entitlement side of this.
Right.
Thank you.
And our final speaker, Mr. Reyes. Rosendahl.
Okay, well, thank you very much, colleagues, first of all, for all this discussion. It's healthy for us to put front and center bicycle. I mean, we talk about everything else. I just got an email here. It says, Councilman Rosendahl, we have a current bicycle plan adopted in 1996 and readopted in 2001. It has not been implemented. Measure R will help us catch up. Pending projects will exceed the 3.5 million being discussed. Thank you, Glenn Bailey, Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Just came in on my BlackBerry, folks, you all know I'm new on this, so I'm starting to get a few little things here.
Thank you for the breaking news.
Bottom line is, folks, let's go vote now. We've had a healthy discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. So that matter with the amendments, we have, Madam Clerk, can we go through those one by one?
Mr. President, you have two competing motions. The first motion that would be presented last was Mr. Kretz's motion that would set a minimum of 10% for bike and pedestrian projects, and that would be with the opportunity to increase that.
And we have three different ones, as I understand?
There's two motions, and then the Budget and Finance and Transportation Committee report, which recommends the 10%.
So we want to vote on them separately?
I believe that would be, if council wishes, because they do compete.
Let's do it. Let me clarify. Mr. Weezer.
Point of order, so if the two amendments fail, the Budget and Finance report stands, and we could vote on that as a whole, correct? Is that...
Correct. And then if one of the amendments is adopted, then the committee report would be adopted as amended.
All right, so let's start with the first one. Please explain, and we'll... Mr. Parks?
I just want to clarify, if we get to the point of the Budget-Finance report, we'd only be, basically, that's in conflict is 1C. So we'd vote on that separately opposed to the overall report?
If you wish to vote on the amendment, and then that would amend the whole committee report, so that would just...
Yeah, the amendment first, but if we get to that point, we wouldn't want to vote on the report up and down, but we'd want to take 1C out.
All right, Madam Clerk, explain it, and then we'll go through them one by one.
Okay, the first amendment is Mr. Kretz's motion, and that was to set aside a minimum of 10% for bike and pedestrian projects, and that would have the opportunity to increase this spending on that.
All right, colleagues, on that matter, open the roll. Mr. Rosendahl? Open the roll, please. I don't think the roll is opening. There we go. Okay, open the roll, close the roll, tablet the vote.
Seven ayes, seven noes.
Okay, that fails. The next amendment is...
Seven and seven.
Mr. Parks's amendment, and that would be to amend Recommendation 1C of the committee report, and that is to, up to 10% spending.
On that matter, colleagues, point of interest for Mr. Garcetti.
If that does not move forward, we still have just the recommendation of 10? Okay.
So again, we're voting on the separate item. Open the roll, close the roll, tablet the vote.
Five ayes, nine noes.
Okay, and now the committee report is before council.
Mr. Parks?
I just asked the committee report that we take 1C out and vote on it individually, and then vote on the report itself.
Mr. Weezer?
Are you separating the 10% from the rest of the report?
Yes. Madam Clerk, will you explain that one more time?
That would be, now, council would be voting on Recommendation 1C of the committee report.
Which is the 10%. Can that matter, open the roll?
Only, and then council will vote on the rest.
Open the roll, close the roll, tablet the vote.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
And now the committee report, the balance of the committee report.
Open the roll, close the roll, tablet the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, very well. That matter is now complete. There's a request for number seven. Number seven, please come forward.
And that was Coach Fisher, the Councilmember Garcetti.
And we have some cards. Actually, we have one card. Number seven, one card, Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs, one card, number seven. Arnold Sachs, it's your time. Go ahead.
I'm going to pass on it.
Oh, you're going to pass on it. Very well, thank you. Mr. Garcetti, number seven. Mr. Smith.
Just briefly, thank you, Mr. President. Just for the information to the council, we are beginning our quarterly reports from the department on the DNA lab program, the outsourcing. You'll see the department will make a presentation shortly. But basically, we continue to make progress. One of the concerns we had last year, recall, was that somehow, through managed hiring, the council approved 26...
Mr. Smith, hold on a minute. Mr. Parks?
I just want to make sure everybody knows that our supervisor...
I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
First district, former city council member, former assembly person is here.
He's sat in that seat.
He's sat in that seat. As busy as he wants, he wants to say hello to Gloria Molina.
Gloria Molina, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome back home, as they say.
Did you come to get my y'all?
Thank you, supervisor. Back to you, Mr. Smith.
Anyway, we continue to make progress. One of the concerns this council had last year was that the criminalists that were budgeted for 26 positions were eliminated by the CAO, were not allowed to go forward on the hiring. That was resolved, but now we get back in the mode of hiring. The plan is to hire 10 right now and go forward the rest next year. We'll have that discussion, I guess, later today. But the department continues to make moves in the right direction. One of the biggest concerns we have, and Mr. Garcetti and I traveled to Washington D.C. to talk to members of the Senate and the Congress about the double testing program which is required by the FBI. There is some movement in there that there's an interest in the legislature and in the Congress to try and fix the problem if the FBI won't fix it for us. That is yet to be determined, but the FBI is now talking at least about the program. And that is basically, when we send out to a contract agency a DNA test, it comes back, if there's a hit on it, we have to test it again. And the FBI, which approves the labs, which we send them to and approves our labs, have the same rules for both labs, but they don't consider the private labs as being valid to upload into CODIS, which is really a silly waste of our time and certainly a waste of our money. of our money. So it's a program we're continuing to work on, and I think Mr. Garcetti, for his leadership on that, and going to Washington and trying to get that fixed. I think we'll see a fix of that later in the year, but I wanted to now turn out to Mr. Garcetti, a real leader in this field also, and I know he has some issues, but do you want to hear the report now first? All right, Matt, Yvette?
Good morning, Yvette Sanchez Allen's LAPD, commanding officer of the crime lab. As you are aware, we started about three and a half, four years ago, testing all sexual assault kits. At that time, we identified over six thousand kits that needed to be tested. However, we didn't have internal resources to do that, so we came to you with a two-pronged plan. One, to increase internal capacity by hiring additional criminalists and support staff, and also to acquire enough funding to go ahead and outsource what we did have in the backlog. We've made significant progress, like you mentioned. The historical backlog that was identified in the original backlog from about three and a half, four years ago, is now down to less than six hundred cases remaining. However, because we still don't have internal capacity, we add to that every year, every month, approximately a hundred cases to our workload. So as of the end of March, we were in the neighborhood of about eighteen hundred cases that remained in the backlog, both contemporary and historical backlog. We are still making progress on the hiring plan, but as you mentioned, the financial constraints of the city have stalled that down a little bit. The twenty-six positions we were supposed to have received this year, we did not get all the funding, so we are hiring ten of those positions. As a matter of fact, I have real good news to report on that front. We had over forty candidates, highly qualified people are interested in the position. We hired ten of them. Five of those ten were actually already employed by us in lower-level positions. Four of those people are on payroll as of Sunday, this past Sunday. One is still in medical background and will probably be on by the ninth of May. The other five are external candidates that have to go through full medical and backgrounds, so they will not be on until probably mid-May, but we're making significant progress there. And that's my report, and I'm here for any questions, and I also have with me Captain Kevin McClure from robbery homicide, if you have any questions for us.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, and thank you to our Chair for being a great champion of this, too, and it was good to be with him in DC, and we did have some hopeful signs, and thank you to LAPD, that's really made tremendous progress, and had a committed culture inside the Department to making sure that these victims and survivors get the justice that they deserve. I know that you covered a little bit of the format in committee, and I appreciate maybe some ways we can tweak that to improve it a little bit, to see also what is the resolution of some of the cases, too, so not just the testing, but where we can, in the future, see how we're doing in terms of whether that leads to case resolutions. And I know old ones are very different by their nature than new ones that we're going to be getting, but some way to incorporate that would be helpful. But just a few questions from myself and from some of the advocacy community. Is it possible to, in that vein, expand your reporting to specify how many investigations, arrests, prosecutions, and convictions have resulted from the testing of this historical backlog, and, you know, as a result of testing the kits that are coming in? Is that something we can do, or is that immensely difficult?
Yes, we do, we do have much of that information, but when you talk about the total results, things change. Just because we have a CODIS hit does not necessarily mean we have anything more than the investigation we already had.
Right.
It's nothing more than an investigative lead.
And that's important, I mean, we know that many of those cases were left in a backlog because people made the assessment that they probably wouldn't go anywhere, and even if they don't, we are sometimes looking for that needle in the haystack, we know that, and I think that's what our commitment is. But we're not looking for those statistics to, you know, embarrass the Department, say, oh, you know, only one out of a thousand resulted in something. Any one that does is a good one, and so it's just a way to...
I've had several meetings with many of the advocate groups, that has been a request of theirs. We are working on that. We can provide that information in a very general sense, probably not to some of the specifics that I think many would like to see at this stage of the game, but we will shortly, once we get this all ironed out, this has statutory implications, where the other one is very informational, we will be able to provide that information in a very broad sense.
Okay, and if we can build that in place, maybe for the ones moving forward, if we don't have the capacity going backwards, that would be a great thing, too, to get even more specific. Let me just ask you, three other ones, because my time will run out, I think, shortly. Can you specify the criteria by which a kit is identified as being unsuitable? That's one question. Second is, when will SID be capacity to eliminate not only the historical backlog, but the secondary backlog, and how many people do you need to do that?
Your second answer parts of that. With regard to the criteria for how we identify an unsuitable case, that has a lot to do with the determination by a robbery homicide as to whether or not a crime actually did occur. Believe it or not, we have interesting cases where young girls will have run away for the evening with a boyfriend, and they come home to tell their parents they were raped and whatnot, and those turn out not to be true, those get pulled out. We also have situations where persons are having affairs on the side of their marriage, and those end up not being crimes as well. In some of the older cases, some of the crimes, or some of the hospitals that take kits, were unable to get actual swabs and whatnot, because victims were reluctant to go through a very invasive exam. So those kits, of course, have nothing in them, we can't use them. There are a variety of reasons similar to that. With regard to your second question, regarding when we will be able to get through the historical backlog and when we will be at full capacity, that is wholly dependent on the city being able to give us all the resources that we had requested in the original plan, and right now, that's a little delayed.
So how many people is that? If we get the ten go through the background check, or the additional five go through the background check, how many more will you need? And assuming we don't furlough forever, which I know has also been something difficult.
Right. We had asked for twenty-six this year, and we're hiring ten of those twenty-six, so that's sixteen for this year. We have another ten support staff, basically, in next year's budget. So if we got all of those, we would be at full capacity, once all those folks are trained, and it usually takes up to two years, depending on the last date of hire, for them to be qualified to do casework.
Okay, okay, thank you. I know my time's up, I appreciate that, and we look forward to working on the reports, and congratulations on the good work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Kardnis. Mr. Kardnis, he's not here? All right. So that matter, no other speakers on the queue? File information only? Madam? Committee report, so no vote required? There is a vote required? Mr. Kardnis? Well, your button was pressed, did you want to speak? Someone pressed the button, because your name was up on the queue.
No, I say Mr. Alicon did it.
Mr. Alicon, you pressed Mr. Kardnis' button? Pick on Mr. Alicon today. Take him away, okay.
Don't do that.
Mr. Smith? I think that was for you. So that matter is before, it's for a vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tablet the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, let's recess this meeting, and take up the special meeting, please.
Alicon, Kardnis, Han, Weezer, Caress, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosnell, Smith, Wesson, Sign, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and accord, Mr. President.
Very well, item, please.
These are, it's a two-item meeting, both items of which public hearings have not been held, and they're regarding the Census 2010.
And, do we have any public speakers on this?
I believe there are cards on item twenty-three.
On pardon?
On number twenty-three, there are cards.
Number twenty-three, Arnold Sachs. Arnold Sachs, twenty-three, sir.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. You're asking the Mayor's Office of the Census 2010 to present information concerning the status of the 2010 census. So I'm wondering, is this the same Mayor's Office that presented information regarding the 2009, 2010 budget crisis? Is this the same Mayor's Office that showed such leadership with the DWP rate increase fiasco that you just went through? Because if that's the same Mayor's Office, then this census is in a lot of trouble. Because if that's the kind of leadership that we got, we're laying off a thousand, we're laying off two thousand, we're laying off four thousand, we're laying off seven thousand. We're going to raise the rates, it's going to be six million dollars, it's going to be this, it's going to be that, we need the money, the council's not acting, we're acting, you're not acting. Who's on first, what's on second, I don't know, third base. This is the Mayor's Office that's going to give us, the city, definitive route to take in the Census 2010. This is the Mayor's Office that's going to be charged with making sure that LA gets a correct count, so that all the funding that's available will come to the city. And this is the City Council that you might have just heard debate, because they need that funding, going to debate about Measure R funding. Yet this is the same City Council that had stimulus project listing, and you wonder, what happened to all those projects listed in the stimulus funding that the city was going to get? Now the city is looking to get funding for the census. Yet they had projects listed for the stimulus funding, and I'm sure some of those included Bike Pass, now we don't know what kind of projects are available for Measure R.
Thank you. That's our only speaker on this matter. Mr. Parks, number twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I ask the city staff to come up? And also, while they're coming up, just to want to make sure the public knows, if they want to keep track of the census, they go to www.sensus2010.healthycity.org, they can get updated information. The reason for, I believe, both of these motions today is that we received information from the April first cutoff date, which reflected, in many instances, under fifty percent of compliance on the first go-round. And I understand May first is the last day that people can send in their cards, and we wanted to, you to give us an overview, give us some insight as to what's going on for outreach, what can we do to increase and enhance our numbers, and really get a message to the public of what we should be doing as a city to make sure our numbers are brought up to the full amount. Okay? You got a video?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so if we can...
Quick video.
We can cue the video and...
Hi, I'm Eric Garcetti, I'm Los Angeles City Councilman, Ferg Wesson.
Hi, I'm Councilwoman Janice Han.
This is City Attorney, Carmen Tratano.
I'm Bernard Parks.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Jose Weezer.
I'm Paul Krikorian.
My name is Councilwoman Jan Perry.
I'm Bill Rosendahl.
This is Los Angeles City Councilman, Richard Alicon.
This is Councilman Ed Reddick.
My name is Paul Caress.
My name is Tony Godden.
This is City Controller, Wendy Gruel.
Hi, I'm Councilman Tom Labange.
I'm Councilman Dennis Iain, from the Third District, City of Los Angeles, here with Mary Hewitt. Mary, why is census important to you?
It's extremely important for LA, especially funding for education.
Transportation, community improvements.
You know why we do a census? It's because it's in our constitution. Every ten years since 1790, we've done a census and counted everyone in the United States.
And the results of this census determine the level of benefits and services that our community receives from the federal government.
It is so important that we participate and make ourselves count.
I know that you count.
I'm encouraging each and every one of you to fill out the forms.
Take a few moments to answer those questions, because it's important to you, it's important to your family, and to your community.
We could lose millions of dollars if these forms aren't sent in.
And most importantly, it's confidential.
And it's important for us to make sure that LA's voice is heard.
Join us in making Census 2010 a success for Los Angeles and all of our diverse communities.
Make yourself count, and make sure that City of Los Angeles continues to provide its services it deserves to its residents.
Should we get our fair share from the federal government?
Absolutely.
Everybody counts in LA, make LA count in 2010, participate in the census, and go to our website, lacounts2010.org. Thank you very much.
Our thanks to all of you for being part of the LA Voices of the Census. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Eileen Adams, I'm the Deputy Mayor for Strategic Partnerships, and for the past several months, I've been working closely with the Mayor's Office of the Census. I'm going to give a brief overview, just two minutes, then I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to Norma Vega, the LA Census Executive Director, and we'll also hear a very important presentation from John Kim, who's the co-director of the Advancement Project. He's going to highlight the most undercounted areas of our city, so that we can figure out how to move ahead together. We appreciate the fact that you're holding this hearing today, it's at a very critical time, we have two and a half months left, so it's a time to re-energize, recharge, re-engage, and recalibrate what we're doing. On May first, as was indicated by Councilmember Parks, this Saturday, US Census workers will begin knocking on doors of those Angelenos who have not mailed back their forms. On Friday, the mayor will be the lead-off witness at a census hearing sponsored by a House Subcommittee. This is an extremely crucial time for all of us to work together to reinforce the same message, which is, it is critically important for those not yet counted to cooperate with the census workers who are going to begin going door-to-door. We're pleased that through all of our efforts, Los Angeles City has had a higher participation rate than other comparable cities, although we lag behind the federal and state averages. As of today, and this is hot off the press, we just got this number in, the city's 2010 census male participation rate is sixty-eight percent. That's higher than the last time around, and it's higher at a time when the state average has actually gone down, and the federal average has stayed the same. And all of the results aren't in, they'll be in during next week. It's important to note, I think, that our participation rate is higher than many cities across the nation with comparable population sizes and demographics, including New York, which is at sixty percent, Chicago at sixty-two percent, Houston at sixty-six percent, Dallas at sixty-four percent, and Miami at sixty-three percent. And we achieved this higher rate at a time when the census budget was slashed at the state level, we had two million dollars this year, compared to twenty-four point seven million dollars spent in the 2000 census. Despite this lack of funding, I want to highlight just a couple of areas where we've achieved significant results through partnerships. It's important to give great gratitude to the philanthropic community, who've stepped up to the plate in a major way. Antonia Hernandez at the California Community Foundation, and Dr. Bob Ross at the California Endowment, both of which have contributed millions of dollars to help support nonprofits to go out there and maximize our count. Their efforts are very instrumental in encouraging other foundations to become involved, and to involving the grassroots efforts. Through partnership efforts, I want to also recognize LA Census Executive Director, Norma Vega, who has secured literally several hundred thousand dollars worth of collateral materials, pro bono assistance, and ad space to promote the census. In addition, some of our targeted efforts, such as our participation in the homeless count, setting up five feeding programs in high-density homeless areas where none existed, will significantly increase our count and our federal dollars. Another major effort by our office, successfully challenging the exclusion of over twelve thousand unique addresses, will also mean that significantly more Angelenos are counted. We went out and surveyed many of these addresses, they were apartment buildings with multiple families, but if you assume that each of these over twelve thousand addresses just had one person, these extra people would generate tens of millions of dollars for us over the next ten years. The mayor, council members, and city departments have also helped lead the way, we have a united effort... We have a united effort, I think, by our city family. One quick example of many that I could cite is the LADWP, which placed two separate census-related inserts in their bills, messages that reached 1.4 million current customers. Since the beginning of the year alone, the mayor has participated in at least eight major press conferences and media events, including two very important faith-based breakfasts in various parts of the city, whose 250 participants represented about 150,000 congregants. And a day of service that included census outreach at 29 schools and 400 volunteers leaving census doorhangers in surrounding communities. Again, I want to highlight the importance of the Advancement Project and their work. You'll be hearing from them in a moment. They can help us all focus our limited resources in the right places. Now, Norma Vega will provide you with a more in-depth view of our outreach efforts. But more importantly, I think, than focusing on the past, we need to focus on the future. How are we going to spend our limited resources and work together over the next 2 and 1/2 months? Norma?
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you, Councilmembers, for giving us this opportunity to present, and it's timely because, as we have mentioned, starting May 1, people are going to be getting... If you have not filled out your form, you will be having a census numerator knocking on your door, and it's going to be important for us to continue our collaborative and collective efforts to ensure that our residents understand that it is important, that it's not too late, that we still need to participate. But at the same time, we have to really balance the messaging to ensure that people aren't too happy opening the doors and being susceptible to fraud. So we will continue working with LAPD and all of our partners to ensure that people understand exactly what it is, what kind of information you will not be asked. So we do know, and what we're telling folks, is you will never be asked for your social security information, for a driver's license, for entitlements, or any other things that don't exist in the 10 questionnaire. And the census enumerators will never ask to go into your home. People can certainly invite them, but they will never ask to go in. So it's important that we continue to give that message out. My presentation, I wanted to keep it very brief to just kind of give you, but give you an idea as to what we've done, what our strategy has been, because that will continue to be the strategy for this next phase. And I do want to give some time to John Kim from the Advancement Project to go over some of this information that I believe you will find very useful, especially for those of you who are in council districts who have, or we have, or what the Advancement Project has designated as priority zip codes. But just really quickly, I want to kind of give you an overall view of what our strategy has been, given with the... I mean, we have challenges today that we did not have 10 years ago, but we also have resources that we didn't have 10 years ago. And so what we've looked to is to maximize all of that. But we did start out, first and foremost, with a grassroots strategy. As you all know, there is nothing more successful and more powerful than the trusted voices of the community. So we made sure that one of the first things that we did was establish what we called Regional Complete Count Committees. We established, we coordinated these efforts and shared resources through these Complete Count Committees in the Valley, in the Central East area, West, South, and Harbor areas of the cities. And through this effort, we brought together hundreds of community-based organizations, faith-based groups, as well as neighborhood councils, and just local leaders who weren't really part of formal organizations. So through this effort, we conducted grassroots work at churches, at schools, working with parents and youth groups. And what we did was, in my mind, very successful, given that most people thought that we would have a lower participation rate than we have. And the most, the one example that we have where we've had the most success, and I think we have Councilman Alacron's not here, but the Valley, we're very proud of the work that took place in the San Fernando Valley, and we saw a lot of improvements there. And we saw that there was a lot of coordination and participation with canvassing efforts and really just connecting with people on the ground. So grassroots was very important, but we also had to make sure that we supported the field efforts. And so one of our other strategies was to ensure that we figured out how collectively here, within the city family, we would make sure that we would utilize our resources to support the work on the ground. And so we had another sort of Complete Count Committee here within the city departments that included liaisons from all the departments, mayor's departments, as well as every council office designated a census liaison. And so through those offices, we made sure that we got the word out, that we also supported the work on the field. Additionally, we also put together a communication strategy. And what we wanted to do was take advantage of the critical role that the new media had on this presidential election, as well as in all of the campaigns that, as you all know, you can't really have a campaign nowadays if you don't have a Facebook page. And so we wanted to make sure that we reached out to our younger audience and our cyber community to ensure that they got the word out as well through the internet, through a website that we launched, LA Counts 2010. As you saw, the LA Voices didn't just include the council members, it also included the mayor, as well as many celebrities and local leaders. We also had a newsletter, and we had multimedia campaigns on MySpace, Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. And Eileen already kind of went over some of the accomplishments. One of the things that I did want to highlight was the importance, and I do want to take this moment to acknowledge the work of all of the departments, as well as the council. And one of the things that we were able to do that was very important was ensure that we had a successful homeless count. When I started, one of the things that I did was obviously go through the books and see the reports that Councilwoman Perry had prepared and left behind. And one of the things that she was very, that she did a lot of work on was on the homeless count back then. And that let me know that that had to be a priority, and we prioritized it, and we continued to lobby to get a different kind of count done here in the city of LA. But we were not successful in getting the Bureau to change that. But what we did do is work with the Bureau, and like Eileen mentioned, organize several events throughout the city to ensure that those areas that had a lack of feeding programs and high density of homeless people would have resources and make sure that those homeless people would not go uncounted. So we're very proud of the work that we did in cooperation with the Bureau. And what I'd like, before I get into what the next steps will be, I want to hand it over to John Kim, who I believe has to get going soon, for him to give us a presentation, and then I will bring it back and give you an update as to what we're going to do moving forward until mid-July.
Thank you, Norma. Good afternoon, council members. My name is John Kim. I'm a co-director of the Advancement Project. I'm also a commissioner for the Board of Neighborhood Commissions here for the city. I'm actually going to be speaking to this document that I believe was passed out to you all. And as you get that out, what I'd like to do is to start by focusing on two critical facts, and these are facts that we've been presenting in briefings all around the state. The first is that the census is by no means over. We have had Census Day on April 1, but we have now the second leg of the census, which lasts until July 1, and that's really sort of where it counts. The second point is the fact that the first half of the census is where I filled out my form, I'm sure where you all filled out your form. This next phase of the census, which again lasts till July 1, is where the hardest to count, the most voiceless among us are the ones that still need to be counted, and where we actually, as a city, need to redouble our efforts to make sure that they are appropriately counted. So I'm going to go through this PowerPoint very quickly, this presentation very quickly. There's a website at census2010.healthycity.org that's been made available to the entire state. We fortunately have the ability to have more data and information available to us as a city and a state than anywhere else in the country, and that's been extremely helpful. I'm turning the page now to a map that actually shows the city of LA outlined in blue, and the dark green areas are where there are high participation rates. So a lot of people have actually already filled out their forms. The lighter areas are where there have been very low participation rates, and you can see how that plays out in the central part of the city. I'm going to turn the page again, and I'm now going to see essentially where there is now a lot of the red circles is where there are the highest concentrations of poverty. And this is what I've been saying earlier, is that it's where there are the highest concentrations of poverty that we still have the least count, and where we still need to do a lot of work to make sure that these folks are very well counted. Turning the page again, you all now have access to something that's never been produced before and was just finished yesterday. We now have average participation rates for every council district in the city. So for your particular council district, we have listed off, as of last Friday, what is your average participation rate? We also have the estimated population for your city council district, so if you do the quick math, you could see exactly how many folks are left uncounted. In other words, how many dollars you're leaving at the door by not getting these folks counted. And so we're seeing here, participation rates averaging around 65%, 67%. Estimated population of a lot of these council districts are about 250,000, so we're leaving about 70,000 to 90,000 folks uncounted in each of the council districts. I'm now going to shift over to this next page here, and what we're essentially seeing is what we've done is look at the highest priority zip codes. In other words, where there are the highest number of uncounted people. We've done this for foundations and other cities throughout the state, and they are refocusing their efforts on these zip codes. When we look at LA County, of the top 25 zip codes, 18 of them are in the city of LA. And just very quickly, what you have then are clusters. I believe Councilmember LeBonde talked earlier about clusters, and we have clusters in the city that are of the highest needs still in terms of the census count. The clusters that we identify would be Cluster 1, which is the central city area. Cluster 2 would span between Hollywood to Echo Park. And Cluster 3 would be the 110 South LA sort of corridor. These are the areas where you have the highest number of residents still uncounted. What we then have in each of your packets is a detail of all the zip codes in each of these clusters, which council member represents that particular zip code, and what other organizations have been funded to do work in that area, so you know, is there a priority area in your council district, and who might I speak to about maybe coordinating and doing some work? We've compiled all that information for the entire state, but we have it best for the city of LA, since this is our home. So you guys have more information to work with than any other city in the state, and in the country indeed, so hopefully you'll put it to good use.
Thank you, John. Okay, so next step. So utilizing this information, what we will be doing, and we actually have already started, and I want to acknowledge a group of kids that we have back here who are going to be working with us. We will be hiring a group of 30 students from the Summer Night Lights program, who also have some adults, promotora-style, parent organizers. And we also have a partnership with the LA Conservation Corps, who will also be doing some targeted canvassing in these. So I'd like to acknowledge our student corps back here. And we already actually have gone out this week, we've gone out to several of these zip codes, and the people still don't know that they can fill out their information, so they've been doing a fantastic job already. And we will continue that for 30 days. So we have 30 for 30. We have 30 part-time employees for 30 days, and we will be targeting these areas. And what we will be doing is a number of things. We will be going door to door. We have already developed some doorhangers similar to what we already did that has new information. And additionally, we also know that, and I don't know if you guys know, because we didn't know until a little while ago, that people can actually call in their information. So a lot of people that are fearful can actually call, and they say, "Well..." Or people that are what I call busy people, people that are not home and get home really late and probably will not see one of those enumerators. And so what we're also going to be doing is launching a texting campaign. So we can text people and let them know, "Here's the number, you'll have it there. Call in your information." And for a lot of people, that is a lot more comfortable. So we will continue those efforts, and we look forward to working and setting up one-on-one meetings with each of the council members who would like to sit with us and figure out what else we can do to really target and get these different organizations involved. Additionally, at the same time, the California Community Foundation will launch a 2010 census targeted outreach effort as well, focusing in the Hollywood, Echo Park, and the central city, Koreatown areas of the city, as well as several census tracts in Boyle Heights and South LA. Their efforts will seek to increase the participation rates that were found to have the lowest response rates in the high-density area based on this data. So California Community Foundation thus far has invested 1.5 million in this effort to boost the participation rates, and this investment includes the 200,000 in grants that will be given in the next couple of weeks, I think, or days for this canvassing effort. So big kudos to the California Community Foundation for really stepping this up. And just on every other, we will continue to change our messaging and make sure that people understand that they should welcome the enumerator, that they should know what information will be asked, and to not forget that it's not too late and that we still need to make sure that we get a full count in the city of LA. And we'll continue to mobilize our celebrity partners, and we'll use Facebook and Twitter. And we really, really look forward to continuing this partnership. I want to thank the council and council members and your staff, who's really, who've really been out there, and whenever we've called and said that we, you know, had an issue or trying to figure out how to get to somebody in your districts, you've been very helpful. And we look forward to that continued participation. And with that, we will end it and open it up to questions.
We have six council members that are on the queue to speak. Mr. Parks?
Yes, but with milestones, is April 1, May 1, and then is there an ending milestone?
Yes, so April 1 is just Census Day, but you could still turn in your form. May 1 is when the door-knocking continues, and it goes till July 10.
But now, when the door-knocking starts, can people still mail their form in?
Yes, you can still mail your form in, but the thing is that because it won't be recorded, you will still get a census numerator at your home.
Okay, so the process of people coming through the door starts May 1, you can't stop that. That's going to happen.
No. So it's anybody who didn't submit their form prior to April 15, most likely will get a knock on their door.
The other question I have is that people have contacted us, is there room or finances to add more outreach groups or organizations that can help? And is there financing or funding available to expand the number of outreach groups or organizations that wish to get involved?
Well, the California Community Foundation, unfortunately, we don't have, we have, you know, funding to hire part-time employees. We don't have the 30 yet. That is one option. The California Community Foundation is going to be giving out the 200,000. We don't have any, we don't have a say-so into who gets it. But what we did do is we submitted all of the partners, all of the community partners that worked with us, we submitted those names to the California Community Foundation for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, a quick question. The homeless feed-out, have you picked the locations and have you started doing that?
That already happened, and the reason why this was so important is, if you have a home, you pretty much have from March all the way to July 10. The homeless count, you only have three days, and that already happened. That was March 29, 30, and the 31st.
Okay. Second thing is undocumented immigrants. Okay? Look, I got one of those initial forms, you know, randomly, and it asks you questions about who lives in your house. And then I got the other form, which I guess everybody else got too, and again, I filled it out again.
Wait, you got the long form first?
Yes.
Okay. You're one of those lucky people.
Well, I got the long form, then I got the short form, and in-between forms. But I kept thinking of the undocumented immigrants. We have a million, or 2 million, or half a million, I don't know. But it's critical to us to get that figure for services. So how do you make an undocumented immigrant and a family of them, or a mix this and that, feel they're not going to get nailed on this like crazy Arizona is in the process of doing? I mean, seriously, how can they come out of the dark and the alleys and the hideaways and, you know, Mary, who is a documented immigrant or is a citizen, fills out what leaves, Joe Off, and Tina, you know what I mean? How do you get that comfort level that we're getting the undocumented, so we have a real count?
Well, that is the million-dollar question, but it's very difficult. But what we have done is we've partnered with several, all of the civil rights organizations have been on board with this. And interestingly enough, there is a study that came out recently, a Pew study, that basically said that nine in 10 immigrants intend or have already participated in the census. So I believe that there was a very strong media campaign by Univision and Telemundo and La Opinion, and so I think that has really helped. And in the work that we've done in going out, it is actually the immigrants that really understand this a lot better than some of the, you know, native-born and some of the younger folks. So it's not perfect, it's very difficult, because the other thing is you're not going to ask, and it's very hard to tell who is undocumented or not. to ask, and it's very hard to tell who is undocumented or not, so the best that we can do is continue to use those trusted voices, the civil rights organizations, and not just the civil rights organizations, but the organizations that deliver services, so that they are the messengers, so that it's not necessarily...
Sure, or like the Catholic Church up in the pulpit on Sunday.
Exactly, which we have, we've done a lot of work with the faith-based community as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weisar?
Well, thank you very much for that presentation, and thanks to the Advancement Project. You guys, I'm always impressed with the type of information you provide, whether it's this, or gangs, or anything else, youth development, as Mr. Cardenas really used your services in the past. You know, we set up a CD-14 Complete Count Committee, it was made up of about 40 organizations, nonprofit businesses, individuals who wanted to volunteer. We did canvassing, in particular those areas that were hard to count, and we think it paid off. We looked at the numbers for the year 2000, and our numbers in those neighborhoods are actually up at this time of the game, so, very good. What should we focus on now? What should my committee focus on these next three days? Canvassing still working?
Yes.
Do we coordinate that with the census? Because they're going to start knocking, they're going to start calling.
Yes.
So where should this Complete Count Committee, who's done a wonderful job, and I want to thank them publicly for doing that, what should we do next in these next 30 days?
Well, we should continue to coordinate with, because a lot of those representatives, and I think your liaison as well, from the Complete Count Committee, was working with our outreach and our regional Complete Count Committee, so we want that work to continue.
So we should still do canvassing, but you guys would continue to identify?
Yes, canvassing, but now we have a couple things to advantage, we know exactly where to go, we know exactly what, and then my team, which I also want to acknowledge, Laura Martinez and Xavier Villalobos, who are here, who are going to be coordinating the canvassing, they have actually gone into the zip codes for all of these priority zip codes, and actually looked by census tract. So we have that research already for you, so we're finalizing it now through this information, and we'll have that ready probably by this week, by Friday at the latest, if not sooner. And we will make sure that it gets sent to everybody, and again, we just want to continue what we're doing. And also, looking at high-traffic areas, and this is, it was really important early on, when I met with every one of the council districts, because you guys have information that is so valuable, because you know where are the areas where people hang out, where are the areas that people go to, so if we can get that information, we can work together, I think we really have a shot at getting a really high count.
All right, thank you, and I know we had two general canvassing events, where we had over 100 people at each of those, and then we coordinated with your offices, and my office has actually been tracking certain neighborhoods, and the percentages as to how people are responding, and we actually went to Wyvenwood, a particular housing complex in our district, because that was one of the lowest in my district, so we've attacked that, and we saw the numbers actually go up. So, you know, this targeting, as you, the layout that the Advancement Project is giving, really, really helps, because we've been targeting those areas that need the most help. So we look forward to coordinate that with you further, because we don't want to overlap in terms of what your office is doing, what the Census Bureau is doing, and to coordinate this, and I'm sorry I cut you off, you going to say something?
No, I just wanted to add that, I think it's very important to stress to everyone that the message has changed, and the new message is...
What's the new message?
That we have to cooperate fully with the census workers going door-to-door, and sort of the sub-message is, it only takes 10 minutes, these workers will be wearing a badge, they're sworn to protect confidentiality, and it's way too costly for our city not to cooperate in this effort.
And that's the new message?
That's the new message.
I think in my district, as we dig deeper to those who haven't already sent their in, it does come down to confidentiality. I think a lot of those are concerned. I talked to some of my neighbors, where I live in Bull Heights, and some of those folks, you know, I talk to them about it as I'm walking in and out of my house, and I see my kids playing at the local ballpark, and they're like, well, yeah, and they don't want to talk about it. And I get the sense that, and I have to remind them, it is highly confidential, not even the Patriot Act that was passed after 9/11, to get more information about individuals, personal information about individuals that kind of opened the doors for more invasion of privacy, in my eyes, not even that could get through the balls of the Census Bureau on this, and it's important to remind folks of that. But thanks all of you for your effort, I hope to be one of the largest cities in the United States that has the highest count. As we know, have a huge budget deficit that's going to last with us for the next few years, it's not going to be over after this year. Every dollar we get from the federal government goes to our libraries, parks, and the services that people use each and every day in our city.
And I think that's another, excuse me, just one last point, if that's okay? I think another point of the message is this, that this is an action that every resident can take that will help our budget crisis. It's something that they can do that's very simple, that will help bring money into the city.
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you. I was looking at my council district, and I'm looking at, we're having like about a 65.7 percent average participation rate as of last Friday, and I noticed in some of the priorities, and some of the nonprofits that are being hired to do some of this work, none of them were in my 15th district. Now, is that because we're doing so well, there's no need, certainly wasn't targeted in South LA, and there's no cluster on the map down in the Harbor area? Is that basically because we're doing so well?
A lot of that has to do with the fact that there aren't as many extremely dense neighborhoods in your region that are still undercounted. So our analysis looks for very dense neighborhoods that are still undercounted, and those tend towards the center of the city.
If you find at some point that we're, that some of these places where you're targeting then seem to be doing really well in terms of participation, and my council district then begins to lag behind a little bit, is there a plan to be flexible for any of that outreach?
Yes, this is just to help us target, this doesn't preclude us from doing work in any of the other areas we're not, and we encourage, this is why we wanted to have this information by council district, to encourage continued work in those areas. But the Advancement Project put this together to help people with the resources. We definitely want to target as many as possible, and if, now, just I wanted one point of clarification, all of these organizations were, not all of them were funded, some of them were just partners, volunteers, some of them were funded by the California Community Foundation, but not all of them that are listed here. But we definitely, if there are some areas, and I believe that there may be, let us know, because there's a lot of other groups that are going to come on board with the California Community Foundation, giving grants to those targeted areas, what it's going to allow us is to have more flexibility to go into other areas of the city that perhaps are not going to get that targeted outreach that CCF is funding. So we're definitely open to that.
Right, obviously, I may not represent dense areas, but certainly...
Of course.
65 percent is good, but not good enough in terms of our future for getting funding for that part of the city of Los Angeles. So when looking at the map, it looks like it's not coming under any target or any focus, and...
Now, I will say, we're doing this analysis week after week.
Yeah.
And so, when things pop up, we notify everyone that, hey, this is a new area...
Right, so tell me again when doors are going to start being knocked on?
May 1st.
May 1st?
Saturday, this Saturday.
This Saturday, May 1st, people will be knocking on doors. Obviously, there's election on June 8th, though, so there might be some candidates out there knocking on doors as well, so we want people to open doors to candidates as well. You know, one of the things I was going to ask, are we going to get, like, I certainly think after doors are being knocked on, I would like to certainly get some sort of an update or feedback on how that's going, if there's, you know, new problems associated with that, so I don't know what kind of an update you're going to give the council after May 1st.
Well, it's, we are doing newsletters, so that's one forum we can do. We had, I guess what we're still trying to figure out is, when you did the mail, when you had the mail participation rate, it was updated daily. We're not clear as to if there's going to be any other update, but what we can do is maybe do like, I don't know, maybe like a weekly report that we can get out as to where we've done, and areas that we've not. It's going to be a lot harder to track, though, because the participation rate is based on the mail response, and so it's not as trackable as it is. I mean, when we were doing, when we were tracking participation rates, it was really easy, you could actually go in there, and we did have a daily report that went out to everybody. But if you would like, I don't have in front of me the list of who your liaison is, but we definitely would make sure that we get that on a weekly basis to your liaison and your chief of staff, and whoever else you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just wanted to note a similar concern to Ms. Hahn, because we kind of back into each other, Mr. Parks is next to us, is Mr. Reyes, and, you know, just as I was sitting here, I was making a list of some of the organizations that were used in 2000 that didn't show up on this list, and I always thought it was a very good strategy to work with organizations that had their own inherent constituencies, because you get a bigger bang for your buck, and just some of them, some of the religious groups by denomination, CRCD, PD Jobs, Challengers, Place Called Home, WLCAC, which is a huge organization in a highly dense area, and has an enormous membership. I would only like to suggest that, you know, I'm looking at this list here, and the list is very narrow about who's doing what, and, I mean, even for my own district, there's only one group on here from my own district. I just think that if there is opportunity to broaden the list of community-based organizations on a citywide basis that could assist us in doing the outreach, it certainly would be a really good use of our resources, and if you would, for the record, and I'm not looking for any defense of that, I'm making a suggestion, if you would, for the record, just tell people, tell organizations where they could go if they would like to help with the outreach, because I know I have gotten a number of calls in my office, and I know that they've talked to our city census people, and they continue to call because they have not gotten on this list yet. If you could just tell them how to get on the list, that's really all I have.
Sure, now, just to be clear, this list of organizations are those that are active in just these zip codes? There are tons of organizations that are also doing work that are in other zip codes, so this is just for these limited...
Okay, but I only have one, and that's not the only organization in my zip code that could be used.
And for organizations that would like to get on this list...
Yeah, so just let's tell them how.
Sure, sure, you can go to census2010.healthycity.org.
Is there any way to do it through the city to be able to do that?
Oh...
Because it's easier to get involved if they can go through their local city representation rather than the federal government.
I'm not sure how AP, how you guys list things, but we submitted all the lists, the entire list of organizations that have been participating and working and doing work there. I'm not sure how, what criteria it was to get on, and I don't know if this is just a sampling, but we did submit an entire list.
Okay, well, I'm still getting calls, for example, Jackie Dupont Walker from Ward EDC, who actually comes out of the 10th district, but does a lot of work in the 8th, 9th, and 10th, and has members through her various organizations, and she called me the day that there was supposed to be a canvassing activity, I think in the Crenshaw area between your district and Mr. West's district, and it didn't take place for what reason I don't know. She expressed great concern over that, and feels that, you know, she doesn't have enough opportunity to be able to vet that through the city process. So I want to be able, on the record, just to give people a place where they can go, and I think it'd be easier if they could go through the city, because, you know, the census has offices all over the region. If there's some way that they could have a point person, so I can go, Janice can go tell Tim Watkins over at WLCAC, I can go to a Place Called Home, I can go to CRCD, because they go further south and east, though that's their catchment area, where they can go to be able to do this.
Well, they can definitely call our office, 978-0301, they can go onto our website, they can call, contact me directly, and we've been working with Ms. Dupont Walker, who's actually on our steering committee, and got this briefing as well. So our office is on the 16th floor...
Yeah, it wasn't just about Mr. Dupont Walker, this is an example, the bigger issue is, it was more helpful to us as a city if we work with as many nonprofits as we can, especially when they have their own membership, their own constituencies, because it's an exponential, it has a multiplier effect, and then we spend the same amount of money, and we hit thousands more people that way without even having to get up off your computer. It's better for you, it's better for all of us, so...
Well, we will continue with our Complete Count Committee as well, meetings.
Thank you, we would be very pleased to sit down with you and members of your office, and just go over the list to make sure that everyone's included.
Mr. Alakon?
Hi, I also want to add to the chorus of congratulations, and thank you for the count. I noticed my district is 68.5 percent, and at this particular point, that's excellent, and so we're hoping to only increase that, and in that regard, I just wanted to ask a question with regard, you mentioned that people can do this by the phone.
Yes.
Is it possible for 311 to be used in a way that their calls can be transferred directly to you, and they can avoid the cost?
Yes, well, 311 has already been activated, and so they already have those lines on there, so there's, basically, it's the hotline, it's the language hotlines, now it's the same hotline, so the number's already there, and on the door hangers that we have, we also promote 311 as...
So if somebody wants to call in their information, they can call 311?
Yes, well, they wouldn't call 311 to get, to put, give their information, but they can call 311 if they wanted to get that number, or if they wanted information.
Okay, so, but can they be connected?
You know what, I'm not sure, but I think if it's possible, and 311 can do it, we can ask 311 to do that.
Okay, yeah, obviously, we'd have to do that very quickly, but in any case, at a minimum, 311 can give them the number that's appropriate for them?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to encourage people watching who haven't filled out their census form to call 311 and get the information.
Yes.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. We were fortunate 10 years ago to have about 30-plus million dollars of state general fund money put into the census effort here in California, and for some communities, it actually benefited tremendously, those communities who paid attention to it actually created that synergy between the council, and the state legislature, and the governor's office, et cetera, but unfortunately, this time, it's about, what, one and a half million dollars of the state has dedicated formally to the census effort?
About 2 million, they've spent, it's 2 million, they've spent about 1.8.
Okay, about 2, less than 2 million dollars. But one thing that I wanted to point out is, there is a state legislator in the valley who so far has been working really, really hard to, in the northeast San Fernando Valley, to put out an effort to make sure that signs get out there, to make sure that people are aware, et cetera, and that's Assemblymember Felipe Fuentes, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for the effort that he's doing literally in my district, in my backyard, in the San Fernando Valley, where we have an issue of undercounting. We've always had an issue of undercounting, for example, it's a very happy day to see that at this point in time, we have an upper 60 percentile across the city when it comes to the responses, but at the same time, the ideal objective would be to get 100 percent count. And I think it's important for us to remember that we're not done, ladies and gentlemen, we are not done, not even close.
Right.
Until what day do the constituents, do the people who live in this country, who live in Los Angeles, have to turn in their "Count Me In" form?
July 10th.
July 10th, so we have until July 10th to do whatever we can. One of the things that, again, Assemblymember Felipe Fuentes is doing, and I'm saying this so that other people would try to see if they can duplicate an effort, or even do a better effort. Felipe Fuentes, the state senator, Alex Padilla, and myself are putting together an effort to help with the count, to help with the canvassing, to help with the communication, et cetera, and I let one of my staff go for a few weeks, so that he can be out there and spend full time on these things.
Great.
And now he's working for a not-for-profit organization, who this is their core mission over the next two months. So that can happen in every single district, that can happen in every single corner of our community of Los Angeles, it can happen everywhere in the state of California, it can happen everywhere in the country, but it's going to take us to put some energy together, to put some resources together, to make sure that the organizations who want to make it their core mission can actually have the resources to make it happen. And there's one thing that I'm willing to predict and guarantee, the northeast San Fernando Valley, the number's going to go up above 66, 67, 68 percent in all of these precincts, I can guarantee that, because that extra effort is helping the formal effort to get it done, and that's what we did 10 years ago. This is a federal, the shoulders that this lies on first and foremost is the federal government. It's their census, it's their count. However, when we pull together with them, and we stand shoulder to shoulder, we can really get the numbers up.
Yeah.
I'm very proud to say that 10 years ago, the only congressional seat in LA County that contracted in size, geographic size... that contracted in size, geographic size, after the census and after the redistricting, and the only assembly seat that actually contracted geographically in size in all of Valley County was the 39th Assembly District and then Howard Berman's Congressional District. And the reason why they contracted was because Howard Berman at the federal level, myself at the state level, thank God, we had more resources back then at the state level, when I was a state assemblyman, and the community, and the not-for-profit organizations focused on this, and we actually got the count up dramatically. We didn't get to 100%. I don't think that's the case in any precinct across the country. But we got a handful of percentages higher, which added up to tens of thousands of people. But if we did that in every corner of Los Angeles, we would get a larger fair share of the dollars that we deliberated over, two hours, just on one item today, on a handful of millions of dollars of federal, of funds. And we missed out on, how many federal funds on the 10-year period when we have an undercount?
200 million?
200 million.
Is the estimate, yes.
Over 10 years?
Yes.
I think it's more than that, federal funds?
208. That's just in grants.
Yeah, that's just in grants.
Yeah, that's just in grants.
But when you look at California sending more dollars to Washington than we get back, I can guarantee you, California is short in the billions of dollars across 10--
That's right.
--years when you look at all the different ways in which we get short change. We need that money. We deserve that money. And we were elected, those people sitting around this horse ship, we were elected to represent our community. We are aware of all this. We need to do everything that we can to get the count up in our corner of the world to make sure that we get that money every year thereafter for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange.
Mr. Cardenas, you made some very good points. I passed around for all of us something I clipped from the USA Today. Mr. Garcetti, you're a Rhodes Scholar, you would know this. How many people live in the eastern time zone, you think?
I never know the answers, you're--
Forty-seven.
What smarter man--
Forty-seven percent of the people live in the eastern time zone.
I was thinking 46.11.
Twenty-eight percent, you had 46, good job, Eric. Twenty-eight percent in the central, six in the mountain, and just 16.4 in the west. That was exactly what Mr. Cardenas was saying, by each dollar, they count it strictly on population. So the more we recognize ourselves in California, the better for the state. On some of the zip codes, which are in the Willshere Corridor, Koreatown area, are you finding challenges getting into buildings at all?
Yes, that was, that is a big challenge.
Okay, and also in some of the 902728, there's hillsides that have problems, and those challenges too, they may have a gate at the street, you can't get in there.
Those are always challenges as well.
Let me just ask a question, have you, because I think your graphic is very good, your actual graphics that you use, LA Counts and the census. I thought of our barricades that we use in public works. Let's just say at 4th and Mariposa, that we put some barricades up, not in the roadway, but invisible, and hang that. We see this when we do the marathon, we say, this Sunday, this road will be closed. If we could maybe do some of that in the high-intense areas where you're having the most trouble, I'll work with you on that. We'll borrow the barricades from street services, but you just lay your sleeve up there just to, in the variety of languages that are necessary, which are there, because it's amazing to see the world of Los Angeles in the world itself. But I would just say that would be a way maybe to help and concentrate on that. And how, what days are workers focusing on this?
Every day of the week as well as weekends, especially Sundays.
Right, good, okay, good.
And we have shifts, so there'll be morning, and then afternoon, after-school hours.
Yeah, because sometimes, a lot of times, because people work earlier in the day, they have a more ability to be home, and they also do recreate, and speaking of that, at rec centers, have we stationed ourselves at rec centers?
Yes, we have, we just had an update with Recs and Parks and several of the other key departments that we will now be following up, because we want to continue with our strategy to ensure that we maximize our resources that we have here within the city to complement what we do in the field.
Thank you, it's a very good report. And is this report being forwarded to our neighborhood councils?
Do we have it?
It could be.
I think you should, and maybe have a message for the mayor and the council in generic to say that this is important, and ask that they maybe agendize this in the next month as a way to try to help get the word out. Thank you very much. Thank you, Norman.
Ms. Hahn, for the second time.
Hi, Adam.
There is nobody else on the queue, so a successful second speech, without objection, that will close. Should anybody else press the button, it is too late now. With that, we will move forward the motion and, or note and file the report.
Thank you.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And one last time, what's the website if folks want to go?
LA counts 2010.org.
All right. And if we can go to items four and five.
Mr. President, that's the special meeting. Do you wish to adjourn and go back to the regular--
Yes, let's adjourn the special meeting, and we will go to the regular meeting.
And--
Thank you all for your participation, we appreciate it. Four and five, if we can--
Those were called special, I believe, for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, four and five.
Item four and five, I kind of wanted to call them together because they both involved the redevelopment of the Jordan Downs housing development in Watts. This is a project that we have been looking to accomplish for a lot of years. We have made sure that we have our elected officials on board with this project. This is one of those where it's obviously going to be a massive undertaking. We believe it will totally transform this neighborhood. We know that we want to do it right. I know Congress member Maxine Waters and I are pretty solid on the line of, we want to do this, we want to do it right, we want to make sure all the residents are involved in the planning as we move forward. So item four, colleagues, will allow us to approve an agreement between our housing authority and our planning department to create the specific plan for this project. It will allow for Hackla to actually give money to our planning department so that we can create this specific plan. And we know that our planning department is certainly, you know, squeezing resources like every other department, and they wouldn't be able to undertake something this large and dramatic without extra funding. And Hackla is willing to provide the funding to our planning department to create a specific plan for Jordan Downs. Item five, colleagues, will allow us to annex in about almost 22 acres of adjacent property in the county of Los Angeles. And this is so important for this project. As you know, redevelopment of housing developments always carries with it a bit of angst with the residents who currently live there. There's a fear that we will be demolishing units, relocating people, basically, you know, giving people a very unstable feeling about where they're going to go, how they're going to live. This project will build replacement housing first before any unit is demolished in the current Jordan Downs configuration. That's why it's so key, we were able to purchase this 22 acres of property in the county for that exact purpose. Now what we need to do is annex that property from the county into the city of Los Angeles. That will go through, of course, the LAFCO process. So what we're doing today is basically giving approval to that agreement to annex that property into the city of Los Angeles. And then we will, again, build replacement housing. We're very solid on the idea, we want one for one. Every unit that we're going to demolish, we want to make sure we have built a replacement unit on this 22 acres before we begin demolishing. That will allow us to phase in the redevelopment of Jordan Downs. So the first phase, we'll be able to build replacement housing, and then we can begin demolishing current housing, and then it will go like that through all the phases of the project. It will be, it will be consistent, it will be timely, it will be orderly, it will be a common sense approach to redeveloping Jordan Downs. And we think, once these phases are being implemented, the residents will be able to understand what we're doing, will be able to trust the process, and will see that it really is in the best interest of, really, not only those who are currently residents, but in the future, more residents who will be able to access affordable housing in the Jordan Downs area. So two things we're doing, colleagues. One, we're approving this transfer of money from our housing authority to our planning department to create the specific plan. The second thing we're doing is approving this agreement to annex this 22 acres of property from the county into the city specifically to build replacement housing on as we move forward with a complete transformation of Jordan Downs and Watts. It's a project, colleagues, that I have dreamed about, literally, since I was first elected in 2001. It's a project that I think the time has come. But as you know, any of these need to be done properly, they need to be done in a timely way, they need to be done with complete transparency and accountability to the residents who are there, and that has always been my goal. I want to thank the housing authority for their work on this. I want to thank the mayor's office for his work on this. A lot of trips have been made to DC, meeting with HUD, a lot of meetings have been made with investors to bring private dollars into a project like this. It's a huge undertaking, but this is part of what we're doing, and I ask for your support on this. It's an important step in transforming this neighborhood for the, really, the interest of the residents who are living there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn, again, great leadership on that. On the county annexation, is that before LAFCO right now, or you know?
It will be.
It will be, so Mr. Smith will keep a great eye out, as he does always, on that. The issue I just wanted to ask, is there anybody here from a department? Just a technical question on this here. If it's, I'd like to follow that model of leadership that Ms. Hahn put forth here. If a community has a, in this case, it is city money helping a very needed project to expedite, does the department have a policy because there's a community that would like to get something done where they're raising the money to pay for it due to this budget crisis that we're in? This is helping to expedite that, do we know that at all?
Faceable planning department, are you referring to Hackla or to the planning department in this case?
No, to the planning department.
And can you rephrase your question in that?
Well, basically, through Ms. Hahn's execution, you're going to be able to take funding from Hackla to get it done. So would you take funding from a neighborhood to get something else done in that neighborhood? That's the question. What is our, and this has greater priority because it has housing, so I'm not trying to step it away. Absolutely.
Well, you know, in face of, again, planning department, I think that this was just to cover the cost of the staffing who would be doing the specific plan, the zone change and plan amendment. In the past, the planning department has accepted funds to cover the cost, whether it's private entities or, in a couple of cases in my memory, some neighborhood--
So we'll get the name from you after this, and we'll call those folks up at the planning department, find the process. Again, Ms. Hahn, congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Let's see you get this thing built. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number three was called special by Councilmember Rosendale, and I believe his questions have been answered on that item, and it can go forward.
All right, great, if there's no other members who wish to be heard on that, if you had a public hearing on that, we'll mark the card for the record. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Next item is item number nine, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendale.
Okay, Mr. Rosendale, number nine.
Yeah, DOT, come on up, and let's move real quickly on this. I know Ms. Hahn had an issue that she brought up earlier, everybody has different issues. But this will be a first cut of it, and I'm sure you'll be coming back with some fine points. Why don't you just give us an overview of what this item is on today's agenda?
Sure. Jim Lefton with the Department of Transportation. You have before you the department's January 28, 2010 report. This is a report on the department's preliminary recommendations to cut transit service, city transit services, and raise fares in order to address a significant projected shortfall in the city's Proposition A Fund. Again, these are just preliminary recommendations, there's no action to be taken today. Since that report was written, the department's conducted a series of public hearings throughout the city. We've received nearly 3,000 comments on our preliminary recommendations. Currently going through the process of evaluating all those comments and finalizing our recommendations, which we hope to have out in about the next week or so. So shortly, you'll be hearing from the department on its final recommendations, and there will be a number of changes in the preliminary recommendations moving forward. So I just want to point out that what you see here today is not necessarily what the department's going to be recommending moving forward. On another final note, the preliminary recommendations are included in the mayor's proposed 2010, 2011 Proposition A budget. I'm going to point that out. And again, just to touch on the shortfall that I mentioned earlier, the city's facing a projected $23 million shortfall in its Proposition A funds next fiscal year, 10/11. That grows each year, and by the 10th year, we're looking at a $315 million shortfall. So we're looking at a very significant shortfall in the city's Prop. 8 fund. The city's transit service program is not sustainable with the existing funds that we have. We need to move quickly to make cuts and raise revenues, or we're going to run out of funding next year, and we'll have to stop running all of our services because we won't be able to pay our bills. That's basically an overview, will be able to answer any questions?
I have no questions from my end, colleagues. Do you have any questions, or do you want to wait until he comes back with the bigger report? And as Mr. Parks's ears perked up about the money issue, it's obviously going to go through budget and everything else as well. Ms. Hahn?
I know, yours, Clam, I don't know if I can just--
Ms. Hahn, yeah, please, you're next on the queue.
He just called on me.
You're next on the queue, anyway.
Thank you. Well, you know, obviously, I have real questions about the elimination of services in Wilmington and San Pedro. And I noticed on the report, on two Ds, there was a reconsideration of the elimination of the Fairfax Dash and the Hyde Park Dash. I would just like to add that as a verbal motion, reconsideration of the elimination of services in Wilmington and San Pedro. And I would like to take another look at that, and hopefully, that will not go through. I don't like eliminating hours for Wilmington Dash after 7:00. I know it saves money, but there's, again, a lot of people that depend on that. So I just would like the reconsideration of the elimination of the services for the 142 line in San Pedro and Long Beach, and for the Dash in Wilmington. Thank you. You know, Proposition A was sponsored by my father, Kenny Hahn. So I don't know if there should be extra allowances for that. You know how we give extra minutes when you're the author of a motion? I think maybe some extra dollars for coming from the line of, you know, the sponsorship of Prop. 8. I'm just saying. I know.
Everything your dad-- Mr. Lavange.
Hey, James, have you thought outside the box with the reduction in money in any way of maybe trying to reduce the cost of operations? Because sometimes I see a dash, and it may not be standing, you know, it's not like an MTA bus, it would be seven people on it. And do we make larger vans that would reduce the charge of that cost?
Well, again, with the Dash service, we do operate smaller vehicles compared to the 40-foot MTA buses. The Dash buses are 30-foot long, and they're intended to go through communities and serve smaller densities, so we already do that. Again, there are certain times of the day where the buses aren't as heavily loaded, but there are other times of the day where the buses do get heavily loaded, and you need that extra capacity. Otherwise, you'd have to run additional vehicles, which would cost you more money.
But the MTA, and I don't know the number, I think it's a 603, it's a smaller vehicle that runs from, I believe, Glendale through Atwater Village, you know, the bus line, down Coronado Street to Temple Bowery and through the, very unique. Well, you know those vehicles?
Yes, I've seen those vehicles, and we have vehicles that are similar size.
I haven't seen those vehicles in similar size, they seem a little smaller. And what I'm saying is, let's just say the Beechwood Cafe route that you have, I don't know if there's 20 people on that bus at any one time, but I know there may be six. So I'm saying, have you thought outside the box to try to look at a smaller van-type operation?
We do have some of those smaller vehicles that we've used previously with the Smart Shuttle program. We could look at having a small number of those types of vehicles. It's not going to save a large amount of money, because, again, most of the costs from operating transit is from labor costs. But we could look--
Is there a different price for driving a van or driving a bus?
Not from a labor perspective, no.
Or why not?
You pay the driver the same regardless per the contract. They have labor agreements, union contracts that call for--
I understand, but if we're going to try to serve the people, I think you've got to think outside the box and come back to us and tell us. to think outside the box and come back to us and tell us. I also think, too, there's a guy named Ernie who was in It's a Wonderful Life, remember that movie? He was a cab driver from Bedford Falls. I think we've got to look at some Ernie cabs, if you could say that, where we help people, because we're not going to be able to pay the big dollar to get up and down a hill, but we certainly should have a way to move people in and out of a neighborhood. And I just say, two, I think, two members, this is real clear. I love California, I love Southern California, I love Los Angeles County, but I'd rather see more dollars be spent on the Wilmington Dash and on the Beechwood Dash than the Simi Valley Express, or the Santa Clarita Express, or the San Gabriel Valley Express, which your Dash buses do. And they have options like MetroLink. I know some, and Dorothy Perez was my great secretary for many years, she would tell me sometimes she liked the bus better than the train. But I don't, if we have to make a choice, and you're coming back for that choice, I want to choose Los Angeles absolutely first.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
And also, last thing I do want to say, on the Dash, which is an acronym for Downtown Area Short Hop, I think you should try to create a NASH, Neighborhood Area Short Hop, and look at it that way, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing, colleagues, is just be aware that we dealt with this preliminarily in committee, and the $30 million shortfall in Prop. A is a real shortfall. And the issue is, is that we gave direction to LADOT that there's no money to supplement it. It doesn't, they can't get a sense of money from the general fund, there's no money available in Measure R. So these are things that Jim's going to have to bring back, a proposal that not only fits within the $30 million shortfall, but $300 million over a 10-year issue. So one of the things that we will discuss at budget today is, because there's so many pieces to this puzzle, it's unlikely that the Budget Committee can sort through them, but we're going to ask that the department come back with their report and have a joint meeting between LADOT and the Transportation Committee and Budget and Finance before the budget starts. But again, we will not be successful if everybody puts back the bus that he's recommending to close down, because I think the line-by-line clearly established exactly where the uses of the buses, and we jeopardize those that are heavily used if we don't cut those that are not being used. And so it's one of those things that, it's 30 million real dollars, and if we don't cut it somewhere, it's no other place to get the money. And so we hope to move forward on this and not try to tackle the line-by-line report in the Budget Committee, but ask that be taken off line to deal with Prop. AC and Measure R, so that we can deal with them independently as a single subject.
Mr. Kocorian. Somebody keeps pushing a button. Ms. Hahn?
Push my own buttons. I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mr. Parks, but again, that's, I think, was my discussion during the Measure R debate on the money for, you know, bike pass, was can the other 90% of that money be used for some of these programs? And again, that's what I would like to make sure I look at. Also, in my verbal motion on coming back and looking at not eliminating the Wilmington and San Pedro services, want to make sure that in that report, you know, we've explored what their alternatives are, what other, you know, means of transportation are available if we're cutting these services. So I want all that so we can make a good decision. Even if their ridership is maybe less, if that's the only means of public transportation available after 7:00 PM for a particular neighborhood in Wilmington, then I want to know that before I agree to cut that service. Okay, thank you.
That matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 10, and that was called special by Councilmember Corretz, I believe, for another council member.
Number 10, was that for you, Mr. Weezer? Number 10.
I believe so.
Mr. Alarcon, was that for you?
I think so.
Okay, go ahead. Number 10.
Is staff present?
Staff on number 10.
This is a, this is an interesting item. It appears that because we had vacant positions and because of furloughs and the E-RIP, that we now need to spend more money to preserve this contract. And I'm just curious, we are, in essence, using about $3.5 million in costs that we wouldn't have incurred if we didn't have vacant positions, and if we didn't have layoffs, and if we didn't have furloughs, and the E-RIP. Am I reading this right?
Jody Oxheimer with the CAO. Because there have been significant numbers of positions that have become vacant over the course of this year, we are recommending that the council approve a contract extension that will cost an extra $3.5 million to reflect an extension of one year in the implementation of the system.
But we couldn't, we couldn't implement it within the time constraints because of these challenges?
I think that's correct, yes.
So first of all, the purpose of this contract was to improve our financial management system?
Yes, sir.
But we're not going to finish the project for an extra year because we laid people off, furloughed them, and retired them without, while we have a hiring freeze, so nobody got rehired to fill those positions. So we have to spend $3.5 million. If you just took $100,000 per employee, you could have 35 employees, and the report speaks to 15 fewer employees. So it seems to me that this is exactly the kind of thing that I was talking about when I said we had to, we had to slow down in our assessment for putting freezes and furloughs without analyzing the ramifications of those things. The ramification in this case is it costs us $3.5 million and an extra year of work to get our financial management system in place? Oh, the irony. I hate to sound like Zuma Dogg here, but this is, this is a great example of exactly what I was talking about. And I really believe that we need to cool our heels in other considerations as well, and where we are freezing positions that could have a potential positive impact on our revenue statement, we ought to unfreeze those positions. What are we waiting for? Do we need to spend another $3.5 million? So I know this is coming out of the contingency, so within, within the context of the budget of this particular contract, we're not going over the budget amount. However, we've lost our contingency. We are under 1% in our contingency. And normally, what kind of contingency do we like to have on information technology contracts? What's our normal contingency rate?
I think the goal is about 15%.
15%?
Yeah, we have about 10%.
And so for the next two years, our contingency will be at less than 1% on this contract?
It'll be about 10% for the remaining amount that needs to be spent.
Pardon me?
We have a 10% contingency for the amount that needs to be spent for the remainder of the project.
At the time the report was written, we had identified available contingency funds of $300,000, but we have additional contingency that's not included in the report. So it is a little bit, is it a little bit higher than recorded?
On IT projects, do they, do we ever have change orders?
Yes.
And what normally is that? In this case, we're asking for the change order. Well, that's great. So we're adding 3.5 million to the cost of this project. Well, I don't, I don't want to, I don't blame the department that's handling this, this contract. Frankly, this falls right in the lap of the policymakers of this city to make decisions that have a negative impact on our budget. This is 3.5 million that should not have been spent. It should have been saved for contingency, not because we refuse to hire people that are going to continue this contract. In fact, I don't even know why we have vacancies in a contract where, where we have, where it's funded. That doesn't make sense to me. And in fact, I even raised that point in one of the discussions. Why would we want to not hire people in positions where we have funded contracts? That doesn't make any sense. Unless somebody can explain it to me differently, this is a mess. But this is not the kind of thing that encourages, encourages the public to get a very positive view of what we're doing.
Randy, go ahead.
Randy Levin, ITA. The reason, Councilman, that we have some funded vacant positions was, in those cases, we couldn't find the appropriate resources with the appropriate skill sets to actually work on the project. So it wasn't for lack of trying on behalf of either Controller or ITA, it was we couldn't find them within the city.
Mr. Weezer.
How much longer do we have on this project? When will it be completed?
January, I mean, June of 2011.
And we have less than a 1% contingency?
No, we have about 10% contingency.
We have 10% contingency for the remainder. So do you think you'll live within that contingency? It's hard to say, but you must have some estimates.
Well, based on where we are right now, yes. We think we can live within our contingency.
Okay, and so you don't anticipate coming back to council for additional funding to complete this project?
Not at this time.
Okay. The extension and the additional costs to the contractors, did they give us a discount for this right now? Right now, we're asking all contractors to discount us by 10%, and we're going back, we're negotiating, we're talking. How about these folks? Do they understand the situation we're in? Were they able to?
Yeah, CGI is our primary vendor, and they gave us about a 10% contract reduction in the meaning amount of the contract. It was about $1.1 million.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Are there examples in the past at many levels of government that just confined ourselves to California, state legislature, county, municipalities like ours or what have you, where you have a project where it was estimated it was 30 or 40 or 50 million dollars, and by the time you get to this point, in some cases, it's actually gone up 50% or even doubled the estimated amount?
Yes, that is true.
Okay, is this one of those projects?
No.
No, so first of all, I'd like to commend all the departments involved for clamping down and not making a calamity out of a large $50 million IT project, because there are way too many calamities that we can point to. At the state level, $50 million calamities, $100 million calamities, and I'm talking about where they spend 50, 60, 70, 100 million dollars or more, and then they realize that they have the wrong project that they've been working on, and basically, they abandon them, and all you have left is paperweights. And then you have to start from scratch and then create a brand-new project, and all of that money is lost. So first of all, I want to commend all of the departments, especially IT Department, for actually clamping down and making sure that this is not one of those kinds of calamities, because it easily could have been. Because this system is actually a very involved, very complicated system, that actually is going to involve many hands, many bodies throughout the city, but mostly, it's going to be the Controller's Office that is going to have the main day-to-day usage of it, and it's going to be the IT Department that so far has had to oversee the technical aspect of the building of this and making sure that we stay on point. So that having been proven, I was going to say that having been said, it's proven so far that we've done this pretty darn well as a city. I want to thank all of you for that. Now, when it comes to the contingency, can you clarify what some of the council members have said, well, the contingency looks quite low? Well, this would be a small contingency and something to be alarmed about if this was the amount of dollars at the beginning of the project. But these are the amount of dollars that are left in the contingency, and we are at what phase of the project? Are we at 40%, 60%, 90%? Where, roughly, where are we at with the moving parts of this project?
We're about half.
We're about halfway there. But when it comes to hardware and things of that nature, where are we at on those portions of it?
We've been tracking very, very closely, and we're right on target with the budget that we submitted.
Okay, so again, this hasn't spun out of control, this isn't the kind of thing where we're having to, you know, stop the bleeding at every turn or what have you, so it's a pretty tight project so far. And this actually went through my committee, which I chair, we've had a lot of dialogue on this on more than one occasion over the last couple of years, and the bottom line is, I can concur with your answer, that this is a pretty tight project, thank God. Now, however, when it comes to the problem that Councilmember Alarcon pointed out, that with E-RIP and layoffs and furloughs and whatever else is going on in the city at this time because of the overall budget problems, aren't some of the major reasons why we have a brain drain on this particular, the people who are going to use this project when it's finalized and turned into a project that's being utilized on a day-to-day basis? Isn't a lot of the brain drain have to do with E-RIP?
Yes, we've had a number of accounting/finance people E-RIP in the city.
Well, E-RIP, as Councilmember Alarcon pointed out, is a policy decision that was made by the council and supported by the mayor, correct? Can the person from the mayor's office confirm whether or not we're all in this together as far as supporting the E-RIP?
Yes, the mayor concurd with that decision.
Yeah, the mayor concurd with that. So, you know, we know that when we're going to let go of 1,000 people, 2,000 people to E-RIP, those are usually going to be the people with 20-plus to 30 to 40 years of experience in the city. And then when it comes to somebody like the Controller's Office, you have people who actually have been here for 30-some years, who know a lot about what's going on, who are great people that new people can come to and say, hey, can you explain this to me? And they say, well, quite frankly, I can, I've done that a million times. Let me explain to you how you do that. But when that person's no longer there for the new people, the new people to talk to, that's what is truly a brain drain. Now, from the Controller's Office, what are the obstacles that you're having to overcome that you assured us in council that it looks like everything should go well as far as getting the bodies you need by the time this comes online, that you should be okay with being pretty much up to speed with the usage of this product, of this system?
Sure. Claire Bartels, Chief Deputy Controller. I believe we expressed a number of solutions, albeit we haven't defined them all completely at this point. One is we're assembling, well, number one, the managed hiring process has permitted us to fill the positions necessary on the FMS project team to go live July 2011. We're actually hiring less than the full complement previously imagined because of the delay, so we're actually not hiring as many as we thought we would under the original plan. As far as succession planning and replacing people like our Director of Financial Reporting, which will be a huge loss to the city in June, we are engaged in recruiting replacements for Mr. Lamb's position, but we're also assessing citywide accountants that have E-RIPed this past year as to their interest, availability and skill set for coming back for interim, either training and/or filling the gap, so to speak, with the cycles of responsibilities, not only on the FMS project, but as we pull from other areas of the Controller's Office, we are pulling to do year-end closing, financial reporting, all kinds of things. We're moving people around in order to constantly shift, to match the priorities, to complement the FMS project team and to get our regular business done. So it's a lot of balls in the air that we are constantly assessing, reassessing and utilizing people that have worked for us and the people that still do.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll push my button again. Well, you were our last speaker, so push it again.
Okay. My next question is, is there anybody at this table who's retiring soon? And your name and title and responsibilities as of late with the City of Los Angeles?
Bill Lamb, Director of Financial Analysis and Reporting. I supervise the city's financial statements, single audit preparation, March 1 report, the various reports on the Reserve Fund that come to the City Council, the city's cash flow, as well as the accounting side of the new financial system.
How many experienced people similar to you have you had, been working with in your area over the last couple of years? Was it, you were by yourself, or you had two or three of you, or?
I've had about 25 in financial reporting, and now about 21 in the FMS project.
And had you stayed with the city a few more years, and this FMS project were to come online in July? come online in July of next year, about 14, 15 months from now, would you have been perhaps the main point person on behalf of the Controller's Office working with this particular system?
Probably not, because the, the system would transition into an operational system, and we have an operational side of the office. The system provides a number of capabilities ranging from the departments through the operational needs of the city and the Controller for both payments and financial reporting, and then also preparing the financial statement. So it, it provides a variety of uses. I don't think that when it becomes operational, there will be necessarily one point person. I think there will be several.
But would you have been one of the individuals who understood how it came about and understands how to utilize it?
Yes.
Okay. But being that you're going to be leaving fishing or whatever you choose to do, congratulations.
Thank you.
Perhaps consulting or what have you. The, the bottom line is this, we're going to have to have people like you with your kind of experience translating and transitioning information to people who will be ongoing and using this, this system, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Have, have people from the Controller's Office E-RIPed? Is Bill the only one that's E-RIPed as of late out of the Controller's Office, or you've had a handful of people?
Actually, we have 17% of our operation has left under E-RIP.
17%? That's, that's pretty serious.
That's counting Bill, who hasn't left yet.
Okay. But, but you see it, he's put in his papers, and we, we couldn't keep him as an employee whether we liked it or not. And I'm sure we would love to keep you, especially in this situation, but that's the way it goes. But my, the reason why I bring that up is because one of the things I want to make sure that is very, very clear is that this is a big system. It's been a long and arduous task to get where we're at. Yes, the contingency is lower than anybody would like, but it certainly isn't at the point where we should be alarmed about it today. And in addition to that, it's really important for us to understand that we're, we're pretty much almost there. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and unfortunately, we didn't bring it online as of July of this year like we would have liked it to. But with all due respect, I think E-RIP was the biggest factor in the people having to make the recommendation to the policymakers that we would have liked to bring it online in July of this year, but it doesn't make good sense. We could, could consider ourselves to be hasty and thinking that we're being expedient by bringing it online this year, and then in that, we could end up spending a heck of a lot more money having to change the system or do things differently or bring bodies on that perhaps would be, wouldn't be up to speed for three or five, four or five or six months. It wouldn't be in a very efficient way to bring it online. So I want to tell all of you I appreciate and respect the fact that it was a difficult recommendation for you to make to us, especially during these difficult budget times, yet at the same time, I think it was the professional recommendation, and by my analysis and the way I look at it, it was the right thing to do, even though it might not seem popular at moments or from certain people's perspectives. But from what I gather and the hours that I've taken looking at this and with my staff and questioning all of you on the record and in my office, et cetera, to try to get up to speed, I think that the professional recommendation was made, and it was a good recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No other speakers on the Q? Matters before us? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item 11, and that was called special for cards.
Number 11. Not here. Arnold Sachs. He is here.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, Arnold Sachs. With the projected shortfall in funding for LADOT with, from Measure, Measure A, Prop A, excuse me, was any thought being given to, and since the city has so many preferential parking districts, has any thought been given to raising the fare, the fee involved in these residential parking permits? Part of this item on the agenda states that the general fund will collect more revenue from tickets issued in these preferential parking districts. So, again, will, was there any question to look at raising the fund, the, the cost of receiving these preferential parking ticket stickers? How many, exactly how many preferential parking districts there are in the city? It's probably close to 30, 40, maybe even 50. So that could be additional funds for the general fund so that you can squander it someplace else.
Matters now before us? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Very well. Announcements, colleagues? Mr. LeBonge, call announcement.
This very nice copy of the Congressional Record that wrote with deep tribute to Jim Sealy, our lobbyist, city representative, city employee for 34 years, and I just wanted to talk. Jim officially retired from the City of Los Angeles at the end of March, but his full tribute is in the Congressional Record on the 20th of April, issue number 55 of volume number 136 of the United States Congress. Good job, Jim Sealy.
Mr. Weezer.
Adjournment motion, sir.
Adjournment. Mr. Parks, announcements?
Let me just, for the public's awareness, due to the construction of the Expo Line between the dates of April 26 through June the 10th, there will be temporary lane closures that will occur at La Brea Avenue from Exposition to Jefferson on the northeast corner, and these will go forward nighttime, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and on Friday, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Mr. Corretts, announcements?
Tomorrow is Dining Out for Life Day in Los Angeles, and it's a successful annual event promoting a day of dining throughout the county. Participating restaurants pledge a percentage of their sales to Project Angel Food, which cooks and delivers more than 13,000 free and nutritious meals per week to 1,600 people who are homebound because they suffer from HIV, AIDS, or other life-threatening illnesses. If people would like to learn more about this event and find out which restaurants are participating tomorrow, please visit the website, and I can't read this.
WWW dot?
LIFE LA dot org.
LIFE LA dot org.
So it's L-I-F-E-L-A dot org.
Very well. I have an announcement that this evening, the YMCA in the West Valley has a fundraiser at the Red Robin at 6600 Topanga Canyon. 20% of the proceeds go to the YMCA West Valley, so if you're dining at the Red Robin tonight out in the West Valley, please let them know you're there to help support the Y. 20% of the proceeds will go to the YMCA West Valley. Mr. Corretts, now you have it.
Yeah, it was hard to read this because it had a couple typos in it. It is diningoutforlifeLA.org.
Dining, say that again? DiningoutforlifeLA.org. Mr. Parks.
I know that budget and finance starts 15 minutes after we conclude this meeting.
That'll be around 2:00 this afternoon for budget and finance, and I have another, on the announcements, this will come up Friday, that we received a correspondence from Austin Butner, General Manager Department of Water and Power, as a result of 245 that has been submitted by myself, Ms. Perry, seconded by Mr. Smith. He is accepting the invitation to come before us. We will then discuss that date, but he's volunteering to come before us and work with us and answer any questions we may have on his appointment. It's the intern General Manager Department of Water and Power announcement. Okay, that completes the announcements. Adjournment motions, Mr. Weezer, adjournment motions. All please stand for adjournment motions. Everyone stand. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of John R. Dinning, the father-in-law to Kurt Gibbs, a well-respected member of the city family who works in the downtown region for the community development agency. Mr. Dinning passed away at his home in Leisure World in Seal Beach on Wednesday, April 21, 2010, at the grand old age of 96. John Dinning was born on January 15, 1914, in St. Louis, Missouri, and came to Los Angeles with his family when he was five years old. He grew up in South LA and attended George Washington High School. As a child, he rode the streetcars and explored, explored all of Southern California. He hoped to live long enough to see the streetcars return to LA, but had some satisfaction knowing that Angel's Flight had reopened before his death. He attended college and graduated from UCLA in their very first engineering class of 1949. During World War II, while going to UCLA and supporting his family, he worked the night shift at a South LA electrical substation for Los Angeles Power, a predecessor to DWP. After graduation from UCLA, he stayed on to work at the UCLA Engineering School for two decades and was there for the birth of the Internet. John Dinning used his education in electrical engineering to specialize in elevator control systems and spent a significant portion of his professional career keeping the elevators of historic downtown Los Angeles running, continuing the downtown LA work of his own father. And John's son, Gary Dinning, has worked on high-rise construction, installing the elevators at Cal Plaza and City Core Plaza, continuing the Dinning elevator legacy. John and his wife of 58 years, Beverly Swedell Dinning, raise their two children, Karen and Gary, in Van Nuys. Looking toward retirement, John bought a 40-foot mariner sailboat, moved the family to Marina Del Rey, and began living aboard the boat in the early days of the marina. With a dream to sail around the world, in the late 1970s, John sailed for several years with his wife and son to Costa Rica and back. John Dinning loved Broadway and historic downtown and was proud of the work that his son-in-law, Kurt Gibbs, is doing for CRA related to bringing back Broadway and reviving the downtown LA streetcar. John's loss will be felt by all who knew him. Our condolences go out to his entire family, many of whom were with John when he passed
Seconded by Ms. Perry. Mr. LeBonge.
I read in the papers, we all did this morning, Floyd E. Dominey died, who lived to be 100, 100 years old, is a great age. He was an architect who brought us about as a Commissioner of Water for the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation from 1959 to 1969, serving under President Eisenhower, serving under President Kennedy, Johnson, and Nixon. He was most known for completing the Gillen Canyon Dam and created Lake Powell. He is preceded his death by his wife, Alice, survived by his children, Janice, Charles, and Ruth, eight grandchildren, 23 great-grandchildren, and a great-great-grandchild. We all know the story of water, and this man was about that as a, someone who truly believed in what he did for the United States in water issues. I ask for adjourned in memory of Floyd Dominey.
Any other adjournment, Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to adjourn in memory of Elaine Sauer, who succumbed to her battle with cancer on Monday, April the 26th. She was a beautiful, funny, and strong woman who was loved by many people and touched many people's hearts. She was adored by her daughters, her son-in-law, and her precious granddaughters, and her very good friend, Richard, who was like a son to her. They were the focus of her world. She will be deeply missed by all.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Any other adjournment? Mr. Weezer?
Before we adjourn, if I could ask that item number 16 be sent forthwith, please?
Very well, number 16 forthwith. Any other adjournment, colleagues? That completes our adjournment. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll. Very well, this completes our meeting for today. We will return on Friday. Budget and finance coming up right after 2:00. Thank you.